Okay, thank you. Welcome everyone to the Wareham Planning Board, Monday, April 11th, 2022. Do we have Mike Baptiste on?
He was going into my office to set up, so he should be on there soon if he isn't already.
Well, he's calling me.
Actually, he's here with me right now.
Oh, okay.
It'll be room to 3:20.
Alright, there he is. Is that why you were calling me, Mike?
Yes, we're in the wrong place.
Alright, very good. So we will call this meeting to order and begin with our role call. Mike Baptiste.
Yeah.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Yeah.
Jane Gleason.
Yeah.
And Sherry Corrigan.
Here.
Okay, and then myself. So all in attendance.
I've got two, three people here, Mike, over at the multi-service center, one of them has a board for presentation and stuff. I'll give them the Zoom number and see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
Tell me what you're, where you are on the schedule. What you are. Someone here for petition seven dash 22? And what do you folks have? I have someone here for performance forum for Bay Point.
This one on watches?
Yes.
Okay, well.
Continued public hearing, number three person is here. The other two, what are you here for? Seven. Okay, so I'll give them the Zoom number. If they can have Zoom on their phones, they can in that way, if that's okay with you, Mike.
Yep, everybody's welcome to attend.
Okay.
Alright, so.
The only problem we're gonna have is I'm gonna be going over to the district, Firewater District Annual Meeting in a little bit, and then Mr. Baptiste, unless he has Zoom on the phone. He's got a flip. I'm sorry laughing, he has a flip phone.
You can go over to my office and get on the, on the laptop there.
Is there somebody there?
Dave Fisher was waiting for him there.
Okay, alright. I'll stay on either way. The mic's gone over. Sorry about the mess, guys.
Yep. Okay, so item number two, approval of the meeting minutes for December 13, 2021. Ken, I've yet to receive these. I can't find them on the website. I asked Aaron at the bottom earlier, but I haven't gotten them.
I didn't find them either, Mike.
Yeah.
They're ready. I guess they weren't published, and so we have to postpone that, and I'll be on next agenda.
Okay, so do we, because it's on the agenda, do we need to vote to move that to the, to the next meeting?
No, you don't.
Thank you. Preliminary business for a voted determination Wareham Crossing Target Request Modification to Special Permit. Again, I went looking, I can't, I, there was no, there was no documentation on this project. Completely blind, I couldn't find anything.
This is a document that you'd seen before. They've been presented to you for consideration as to whether or not you want to do it as a minor modification or a major, a substantial or major modification.
Well, unless I, unless I misunderstood the conversation, we had all agreed that we asked them to go back to the drawing board and look at the feasibility of moving those stations to the left-hand side of the building away from the, the traffic of the front door. And that was kind of what I was looking for on the website was, was a drawing of some sort, and I found nothing.
They didn't, they decided that it wasn't working for them to move it to the side. It only works for them when it's in the front.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't think we even, well, I'm gonna speak for myself. Obviously, I'm gonna ask the, the members of the board to chime in. But I, I don't see where we're leaving it. Well, first of all, are they present? That should have been my first question. I apologize. Is, is there someone present to speak on this from Wareham Crossing and Target? Okay, I don't hear, I don't hear anybody.
Make a motion to deny it.
So we have a motion from Sam Corbett to deny the request for the modification to the special permit. Do we have a second?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I thought we were being asked a rule on whether this was major or minor. That was what we were being asked to rule on.
Well.
So they haven't submitted, actually. Haven't submitted a special, a request for a special permit. They're waiting for us to determine whether it's a major or minor modification.
Agreed.
You're right. You're right, good point.
Also, Mr. Chairman, they're not here.
Right, but we, I don't think, if they're not here, all that does is it, they lose their voice in this, but the question still remains, is it a major or is it a minor modification? So we, we just have to come through determination which way we feel it, it, it is.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that there was, if I recall correctly, I thought that there was some discussion about the possibility of them even moving it over one aisle away from the front door in the front parking area, which is not moving it fully to the side, but it, it keeps their traffic flow working from the front of the building for them to access, so.
But again, I, I agree. I don't agree with the location, but that's not really the question at hand. I guess the question at hand is, as a board, do we feel that what they're trying to attempt is a major or a minor modification to the special permit?
Well, it seems that the, the question for me at hand, whether it's major or minor, has to do with public safety and the traffic flow and, you know, pedestrians and automobile traffic intersecting each other.
So, Mr. Chairman.
So I guess I would like to hear from them what their, what their real plan is. At the last meeting, we, they presented something casually, and there were suggestions made that perhaps they would want to look at an alternative location for the aisle of, of parking spaces they want to use. And we haven't heard back from them in response to that question being raised.
Actually, I, it, that's, that's an excellent point, Jane. I guess what I'd like to ask is, Ken seems to know what's going on, so they obviously responded. How come there was no correspondence to the board as to what their response was so that we could prepare for this question?
I assumed that they were gonna be attending tonight and make their presentation.
Okay, so I would say, from my own point, viewpoint, then if they're, if they can't make time to attend the meeting and, and present their viewpoint, that we don't act on this.
At the moment, they don't even have a, a project number with us, you know, our standard year and project number.
We don't give out project numbers for minor modifications, so it depends on whether it's major or minor.
Right, so this is just a determination of that, so if they're not here, doesn't that just come off the agenda? What else do we do?
Well, I'm, I'm prepared to make a decision.
As to whether it's major or minor?
Yes, I, I have an opinion, and I could, I, I have sat in the parking lot on two separate occasions for up to an hour at two different times of the day. I watched traffic flows. I watched people coming out from the store to service the pickup clients. It was not, there were not very many pickup requests, and I did not see that much traffic, so I didn't, so the safety concern, to Ms. Gleason's point, I did not, with current traffic patterns that I witnessed, see any, any safety concerns. The only issues that I came up was with the account of parking spaces, which I sent a note to the board. Basically, they have probably 80 parking spaces currently given up to still containers in the lot and shopping cart storage. But I still think that, that leaves them enough, enough parking spaces with the additional six they're gonna lose.
Yeah, with the side of that lot, I would have to agree. I don't think six parking spaces is gonna, is gonna be the end of the world. I still have my concerns about the safety, but we, we, just that when they come to us for the, for the modification, after deciding what's minor or major.
So, Mr. Buckland might prove through the chairman to Mr. Buckland, if we decide this is minor, this thing goes to the ZBA, right?
If it's minor, then you're making a decis- decision to modify this, the special permit issued by the planning board for the, for the work to be done.
Okay, so again, that goes back to, if we, if we determine it's a minor modification, then this thing gets approved.
You're in trouble.
There again.
It, based on what you just said, Ken, if we, if we vote to, to determine that this is a minor modification, then this thing just goes forward and, and they go ahead and they build?
Yes, that's, that's what would happen.
I don't think I'm prepared to, from my viewpoint, based on Jane's input, my own, I, I also, Carl, have sat in that lot. I actually sat in that lot for half an hour this morning, and I just, I don't feel that it's a safe, it's, it's a safe environment to have cars running back and forth across the front of that building as staff is coming out of that building to service more on-call pickup. I don't think, I don't think.
Honestly, I, I just think that we left this as an open question with them, and I'm not sure what we're voting on.
Right.
We didn't really get a list. Yeah, if we say it's a minor modification, that means that they can move forward, but we don't even know what they're gonna move forward with, because it was, it was an open question when we left it last.
Well, we did, well, we did get the email outlining their plan.
You might be getting some feedback, because he's on the Zoom meeting right here, so if you go down the hall a bit, you won't get that feedback.
Okay.
So you are in the meeting, that is the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Charlie. Could I offer just a, a comment?
Absolutely.
There's an existing special permit on the entire Wareham Crossing. My suggestion would be that you, someone read the special permit to see if there was anything listed in that special permit that identified what be, could be considered as a minor modification versus what would be necessary for a major modification. If there's no language, then the decision simply becomes yours to make. But there may be something in there that suggests that XYZ constitutes a minor modification, and anything else probably would not be. So my suggestion would be that if you can grab a hold of a copy of that special permit, read it to see what the terms say, and if it's silent, just go ahead with your decision based on whatever gets submitted to you. But I would recommend that a submission be given to you, and then you make a choice as to whether it's major or minor.
Yeah, we need that submission.
But it may depend on what says, what the special permit says.
Okay, I, I think that's a good plan. So, you know, devoid of an alternate design, devoid of the, the connection, being here to discuss this with us, and Charlie's input, I would entertain a motion to, to not vote on this and move it to the, to the next, to the next meeting, April 25th.
April 25th is a special meeting for, before town meeting. You have a public hearing you have to hold on the article, on the zoning article, and you, you may not have time to go through another, another item on the agenda.
So that, so that puts it, that, but that pushes them out till the ninth?
May 9th, that's right, May 9th. They probably won't like it, but that's, that's what you can do with this guy.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't think they did themselves any favors by not, not attending the meeting tonight, so I would revise my request and entertain a motion to put off the vote for Wareham Crossing Target Request for Modification to Special Permit to the Planning Board meeting of May 9, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Jane Gleason. I'll take a vote, Carl.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Nay. Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
The chair votes, aye. Can the chair vote on this as an associate?
If there's a member missing, she can vote on it as an associate, because it's a special permit.
Okay, well, everybody says, so I guess she won't be able to. So that would be. Yes, sir.
I'll finish the point. I, I, before we move on to the next item, I have a question.
Okay, very good. So the vote is four, one, zero. Two, one, two, three, four, four, one, zero, to put off a vote until the May 9, 2022 Planning Board meeting. Carl?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in response to Mr. Rowley's recommendation, we review the Wareham Crossing Special Permit. I believe we also have another item on the agenda tonight asking for a determination of a major or minor modification. So I believe I've read that, but.
Yeah.
Could we mute?
It's gonna be interesting.
Can we mute, please? Could we request that the planning office send us a copy of the special permit for the board to review? I'm not sure how we're gonna pass on the next item either without a better understanding of Mr. Rowley's question.
Yeah, I think it, yeah, I think it definitely has relevance to that as well. I, I agree.
Just on that point, Mr. Chairman, I've read the special permit, and there's nothing specific as to the criteria that you determine whether it's a major or minor modification.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I think for my own certification, I, I would still rather read the special permit first. Not that I don't believe everything you tell me, Ken, but I feel a little uneasy acting on something without general knowledge. But I gladly accept input from the board as to their feelings on, on this, because this is the next item on the list.
Alright, well, let, let's move, maybe we should just move on to that, open that discussion, and then we could get input.
Yeah, okay. Alright, next on the list, preliminary business, item number two. For a voted determination Wareham Crossing Cape Cod Coffee Request Modification to Special Permit. This is in reference to outdoor seating that's gonna remove four parking spots from the available parking on, in Wareham Crossing. Is there someone here to speak to this?
Yes, this is Hannah Foley with WS Development, the landlord for Wareham Crossing.
Okay, thank you, Hannah.
And I can speak to some of the implications of our original site plan approval as well. I have no involvement in the Target application, so I didn't feel that it was my place to speak up on that item, because they are representing themselves on, on that front, but I can speak to some of the conditions in the original site plan approval that dictate what and what cannot be considered a minor modification.
Okay.
So just to give a quick overview of the project itself, this is for Cape Cod Coffee, a new restaurant going into the former Coasty space on the end of Wareham Crossing. They are looking to install approximately 750 square foot patio space just outside their premises that will be connected through an exterior door from their space. It's gonna take up four parking spaces, none of which are ADA parking spaces. We'll be installing a five-foot clear ADA-compliant sidewalk all around the patio. The patio will be fully enclosed with a cable railing and planters. And we are still well over the required parking count at the property. I believe we have a current surplus of about 480 parking spaces property-wide. So the loss of four is obviously very insignificant. In terms of the original site plan approval that was issued for Wareham Crossing in 2006, as long as the total square footage building area for the property does not exceed 695,000 square feet, which obviously this project is not adding any building areas. There's no impact to building area. And the parking ratio meets or exceeds 3.33, which we are at a 4.2 right now, and obviously four spaces is not going to change that. And that the vehicle circulation, access, and drainage are not materially impaired. Those are the, those are the three qualifiers to what is considered a significant change based on our site plan approval. So from our standpoint, we believe that this patio is, is certainly minor and should be able to be approved administratively.
Okay, thank you for your input, Hannah. It's, it's nice that someone for the project was here to speak to us and give us the, the information.
I'm sharing my screen with the site plan showing the addition of the outdoor seating.
I didn't see this on the website either. Is this, are we behind getting stuff up?
This just came in from Hannah.
I reached out to Ken last week. Based on our site plan approval as well, the town planner actually has authority to make administrative decisions and administrative approvals if he deems fit. If not, he sends it to the planning board to make their determination if they need to open it up to a public hearing or if they can improve administratively. So that's the process we've been following, so I shared all of this information with Ken last week, and then he put us on the agenda for tonight.
Okay. Yeah, this is the first time I've seen this. Where the patio is, what corner of orientation is that, if you're looking at where the old Coasty was?
So if you're looking straight, yeah, if you're looking straight at the, the building, it's on the right, because it's the end cap space, so it's on the right. If you continue to walk sort of plan north, you would walk towards Red Robin. When you're looking at Cape Cod Coffee behind you is wines and more, the patio will be on the right. So it's sort of, it's a little bit of a quieter, little side parking lot that mostly serves Red Robin, and it's just gonna be four parking spaces. The sidewalk, as you can see, wraps around. The patio will be fully enclosed with a railing and a series of planters, and no ADA parking is being impacted.
Okay. Yeah, that is, that is a quieter corner for sure.
Yeah.
Any input from the board?
Mr. Chairman, through you to the applicant. Thank you for the update on the, the parking count. The, I believe you said you're over by 480 spaces. Did you adjust that number for the spaces lost for the Lowe's change?
It has not been adjusted for a Lowe's change, no.
So how many spaces did we lose with the Lowe's change? Does anybody remember?
It was six.
Six, okay, not, not material or 480, and then we're gonna lose, depending on what happens with Target, that would be another six. Again, on the issue of parking spaces, have you subtracted for all of the cart returns throughout the parking areas?
Yes, those are not.
Oh, that, that are not included in the totals. Okay, thank you. What about the spaces used, because we lost six for, for Lowe's, but both Lowe's and Target are still using an extensive amount of space for product storage and storage containers. Those, those spaces have not been accounted for in your account, right? Still not 400, still not 480, but I'm just trying to make it clear.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good point. Target's parking lot has mainly been used as a staging area for their major renovation that they were completing over the past few years, so that is not permanent, you know, approved storage in their parking lot that's going to be permanently eating up spaces. Lowe's has their seasonal sales area that they utilize to store their garden materials in parking spaces during certain times of the year, but it's also just a temporary condition for them where they do, do outdoor sales based on their use.
Yeah, that's, that's. Respectfully, Hannah, that's really not accurate, because when the spring and summer season's over and the mulch is gone, the winter season shows up, and they have the, the pellets and the rock salt, and so those parking spaces are always eaten up by pallets.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we've determined they're not accounted for, and then lastly, did you subtract all the spaces taken up by Tesla?
Tesla's parking spaces, those are, those are counted in our count.
Are they truly parking spaces? So I, I'm speaking out loud, I'm thinking. Okay.
They can be utilized for parking spaces for, for folks with, with Teslas. It's 14 spaces. So still not material in with the bottom line.
Are there, are there 14 Teslas in the Wareham area?
Yes, there are.
Okay, okay. Alright, those, those were my questions about the parking count. I'm, I'm, I understand the application, I understand what Hannah told us, and actually, if, if she's correct about criteria for major or minor, I'm satisfied that I understand the application.
Yeah, I, I would have to agree. Is there anybody else that has some input?
I have a quick question about the railing. It appears that there are, there's railing between pairs of planters.
So the, yes, the railing will go all the way around the outside, and then the planters would be installed on the inside. So yes, the railing will go all the way around the outside and then the planters would be installed on the inside of the railing. Just, you know, as an additional buffer and also, you know, just a nice visual to help the appearance of the patio as well.
Yeah, in the drawing, it actually looks like the railing goes between each pair of planters and then there's sort of an opening. I mean.
There was either two, the only real openings will be the main door from the premises on the left. Yep. And then the, as a second means of egress, there's going to be a little gate at the bottom as well.
So there's a gate in the railing? Is there a reason why that can't just be open?
Yeah, it might, it might be, it's not, you know, I don't know, have the exact detail of that, but it'll, yeah, it'll either be an opening in the railing or some type of gate, but depending, depending on the type of railing, the final product that they select, I think that would determine what that opening looks like.
Yeah, and does it, it opens up onto an existing sidewalk or into?
Correct.
Okay, so if someone, if someone were to walk out that gate, they're not going to get run over. They just kind of exit onto a sidewalk.
Correct, yes. That'll all be paved sidewalk. It'll wrap all the way around five foot clear.
Well, and it doesn't look like that gate impedes a travel path either. It's sort of tucked back into a corner. I just wonder if getting rid of the gate might make things easier for.
Yeah, there may, there may or may not be a gate. It'll be an opening of sorts.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, not hearing or seeing anyone.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, one more request through you to the planning office. Could this be posted on the website so we have a record of it, please?
Yes, you can. It will be posted as well as the target graphic as well.
Thank you.
In this particular request where we had the applicant present with some very detailed information, I would be inclined, even without reviewing the special permit firsthand, I'd be inclined to act on this. It's a much, it's a much smaller impact than the target with no, no safety concerns. So I would entertain a motion to vote for Wayham Crossing Cape Cod Coffee request modification to special permit as a minor modification?
No move.
Second.
I missed who made the motion. Was that you, Mike?
That was me. No, Sam.
Sam, okay. So motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. Okay, so we'll take a vote, Carl.
I with the understanding, I was going to justify my understanding that vehicle or circulation is not impacted by this change. And for that reason, I don't think this is a major modification.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so we have an eye from Carl Schultz. Sam Corbett?
Hi.
Mike Baptiste? Jane Gleason?
Following Carl's example, I would like to add that there's no interface that's added between pedestrians and vehicles with this proposal, and I vote aye.
Excellent. And the chair votes aye. So it's 5-0-0 to approve as a minor modification. Thank you very much for attending Hannah. That was very helpful.
Thank you guys very much. Have a good night.
Item number three, discussion and possible vote for setting performance bond for Baypoint Phase Two. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Chris Reynolds from Baypoint.
Thanks, Chris. Charlie, I would ask you to kind of lead the charge on this one. I did read all the information that they supplied to you.
Okay, if you'd like me to, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, well, I don't think anybody understands this better than you do.
Hang on just a second. Okay, does everybody have a copy of the submittal that was done by Baypoint dated April 8th?
I do.
It's five sheets of items with respect to the materials, the cost of labor and the equipment?
I have it Charlie.
Okay. Does anybody not have it? I mean, I'll try to explain it a little more if, if someone doesn't.
Well, it only went to Mike and the planning office. Ken distributed today, and again, this has not been posted on the website, I don't believe.
All right, well, just moving forward then, I did go through all of this. I did receive information on Saturday from Chris Reynolds that this is based on the contract document that they have with the current contractor who has up till recent weeks had installed some of the drainage and some of the sewer lines in Phase Two, all of which is in the ground that I've inspected. And running through this list, it appears that they have taken that into account because there's not a complete list for all the sewer lines and all of the sewer manholes and so forth that were, that were actually shown on the plan. So just quickly running through this, there were only a few things that I had a concern about. And the first ones would be on page two, items 11 and 12. They have to do with the four inch force main and an inch and a half force main. I was trying to assess exactly what the length of each one of those items was. And I'm assuming that the four inch force main that we're talking about is a four inch gravity line. Not, not a gravity line, a force main that does go into the gravity system that's in Starboard Drive and then ultimately ends up at the pump station. And scaling that out, I think it was a little more than 350 feet. I scaled 400 feet on the plan. Makes a minor change to the total length of pipe that we're talking about. Can we go to the next page, Ken, if that's possible? There you go. It's, it's the first item on the page, item 11. People can read it. And then a few lines down, it's item 12. So I did change those numbers. It went from 350 for the four inch main. I scaled off about 610 feet for the inch and a half. So I made adjustments using the unit prices that they have shown on the plan and adjusted those particular two totals for that. The next item that I checked was on page four. And this is all under the heading of roadway and asphalt paving. And it has to do with the two inch asphalt binder and the inch and a half asphalt top. I did check the gravel barrel and independently came out with a number which is very, very close to the quantity that they have listed there of 1,304 cubic yards. I'm assuming that their unit price is okay, and I'm assuming all of these numbers are based on the the contract that they have. But in looking at the two inch asphalt binder, I started at Baypoint Drive where Phase Two would commence. It runs for a total length of 1,600 linear feet toward Onset Avenue. This is up toward where the, the old Kahoon Road stopped. It's now I forget the name of it. It's a little short stubby. It was Kahoon Road. And I also included the cul-de-sac because that's a substantial amount of paving as well. I ended up with 46,571 square feet rather than 35,200. And that makes a substantial difference in the total price for the mix in both instances. Obviously, it's the same square footage. The square footage is based on the length. It's based on a total of 24 feet in width. The pavement width, the driving pavement width is 22 feet and it has a 12 inch berm on both sides, so that adds out to 24 total because the berm sits on top of the mix. So in making those adjustments, the two inch asphalt binder went from 74,000 to 98,000. The top went from 68,000 to 90,000. There was also the factor of the Cape Cod berm, which is not included in these numbers. So I did add roughly one length of the street, 1,650 feet, because you have to break it up for all of the different parking spots and driveways that go to the various units. So I only used one side of the street. And I added $3,731 to that. The next item was on page five. And it was under the title of Lowman Seed. I'm assuming this is Lowman Seed for around the area or at least around the roadways. It says spreads topsoil along the roadway. But you'll notice in item 47C, there's no material cost. In the event that the town would have to go in and finish this work, if, if the owner were to default on whatever security you approve and you have to go in there, I'm assuming he would, the town would not have any right to take any materials that were stockpiled or used on the site that belonged to the owner and simply start spreading that around, that they might have to purchase material on their own. And so that's why I've added $6,592 onto that for a material cost and added that to the to the quantity. And then multiplied it by $30 a cubic yard and it came out with $16,092. So I'm sorry, that's not correct. $6,592, I was adding up the total for that category. Make a long story short, the total base amount rather than being the 696,708 that you see in the bottom of the page, and this is on page five, which is up on your screen, it comes out to 761061. That would be the base price, assuming that everybody accepts the numbers and those. And I did not question the other numbers, although I went through each and every one. Tried to be sure that I was being understood exactly what they were telling us on the sheet. So that being the case, ordinarily and in recent past, you have multiplied the base amount for this type of security by 25% and added that number onto the base amount as the amount to actually be secured. I don't really feel comfortable in recommending that at this time. For one reason specifically, that the contract that's out there has been out there for better than a year. I was doing construction inspections last summer and they went up until, I think, December. I'm not sure exactly when the contract was approved and signed or was put in force, but it makes no difference. Those are numbers that are at least a year old. And it was certainly before we started to see a real significant increase in the prices of materials, price of oil, price of fuel, price of just common goods. So my recommendation in the letter which I sent to you was to not use 25%, but to use 35%. At this point in time, the, the questions that remain for the board would be, are you comfortable with the changes that were made on the summary sheets? Do you have any questions for Mr. Reynolds? And what you would be comfortable with in terms of adding to the base price to come out with a full number that they could use to insert in a proposed draft of the tri-party agreement? That's really what they're considering right now. And they need that number in order to get to the bank to establish what the bank would be willing to put in there and agree to. So the, the questions right now would be, number one, are you comfortable with the numbers and the recommendation for the numbers? And are you comfortable with the percentage increase? Or do you see that it should be something different? I had put a few other things in the letter, but at least for right now, I think those two questions are the most important ones to answer.
Thank you Charlie. The first, I think the, the adjustments you made make perfect sense. I don't have any issue with any of that. I think the only question I would have for, for you is I'm looking at the labor costs. And, you know, you've got a variety of disciplines here between water utilities and asphalt, you know, different, different companies, different talent levels, so obviously different pay scales.
Yep.
So if like Lowman Seed, you know, landscaping services and roadway and asphalt services might come in at a different cost per hour per man. If, if for whatever reason the town had to go in and do this, would they be bound by prevailing wage on all disciplines regardless of skill level?
I think that anytime, you're obviously going to, if you're going to call in the, I'll call it the bond for the lack of a better name, make it a short name. If the town were to call the bond and say, okay, there's been no performance on this. We need to get in and fix this. They're going to take a look at the materials and the, the requirements for finishing off the project the way it's called for. At that particular point, they would have to decide how much that's going to be and they would have to request a readout from Labor and Industries as to what the prevailing wages would be for those various disciplines. That would include perhaps drainage. It would include installation of sewers. It would include landscaping of shoulders of the road. It would include the paving, placement of gravel. Each item that you're expecting to, to actually take under consideration and accomplish would be written in a request that goes to the division. And they would send out a list of the various rates that are applicable to those two particular disciplines. So they might not always be the same. They could be different based on whatever it is that you're looking at.
The short answer is yes, that the prevailing wages are higher and it'll be, we usually consider 30% to be the additional cost of prevailing wages.
That's, that's been your experience is that if you have to go to prevailing wage, it's an additional 30%?
No, yeah, if it's a, if it's a municipal project too, I think over a certain amount of money, it automatically goes to prevailing wages. So it's going to be whatever the percentage is in each category for the disciplines of work to be performed. I just took a quick look at these and it, it, the, the wage rate per unit runs all the way from say 10% to 57%, depending on which numbers you pick out of the list here. They're all over the place.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was just looking at prevailing wages in Massachusetts. And they're pretty, they're pretty stout. You know, just for an electrician, you're looking at $90 an hour, which probably isn't unreasonable. I mean, I think the average electrician is $90 an hour anyway. I was trying to gauge whether or not, you know, we should look at the multiplier where we multiplied the, the labor rates at X and then everything else at Y rather than just using a blanket. But looking at the prevailing wage rates, I don't, I don't see anything outrageous. So I guess that's probably a point. We can just use a standard multiplier. Carlos, see your hand up, sir.
Yes, thank you. First, to clarify, this is a performance bond only for Phase Two. Historical question, have we released the covenant for Phase One and they're operating under a performance bond for Phase One? Is that correct?
That is correct, Carl.
Okay, and Phase Three still has the covenant and Phase Four is still under process.
At the present time, both Phases Two and Three are under covenant.
Yes, yes, this is, this is only dealing with this. All right, my biggest All right, my biggest concern is, uh, uh, some of these costs are related to the sewer. And in all honesty, I still don't understand what's going on with the sewer. Uh, on February twenty-eighth, the applicant asked us to submit questions. Uh, one of the questions I submitted was for them to provide a clear layman's explanation of what's going on with the sewer. And, uh, so that I can understand their plan versus all of the complaints that are being made by the citizens. I can't understand, um, what's going on. And to date, uh, they have not responded to those, there's other questions we submitted. To date, they have not responded to those questions. And I can't, I can't really vote on anything for them because I don't understand. So without understanding the resolution to the sewer issue, I'm confused about the overall design. So that's my input. And I'm, I can't mo, I, 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 I can't say enough how upset and frustrated I am trying to get. They, they asked for me to submit questions, and I did. And I haven't heard back from them, not an answer, not a peep, not an acknowledgement, nothing. So I can't support this.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, uh, help Carl out perhaps a little bit? Um, phase two is under approval. Uh, it went through the public hearing process. There is a small section of, um, gravity sewer in the beginning of phase two that runs back to the existing pump station that was all approved under phase two. The construction, what we're talking about is simply the construction of the road in phase two, along with the pumping station, which only services phase two. So whatever approval was a part of the phase two special permit, which has been in effect for more than a year now, uh, there are no changes. This has nothing to do with what may happen in phase, so-called phase four. Any of the issues, in my opinion, that have to do with the use of the existing pump station or not, because what we're talking about is simply changing the form of, of how the lots within phase two would be released. And that happens in one of two ways. Either the road is completed, including all sewer connections for phase two, all water services are done, the pavement's done, uh, the storm drainage is in, the Loman Seed is done. Everything is done, and then they request a lot release. Or, as they are currently doing, and as they did for phase one, they're asking for lot releases in exchange for posting money in the form of security in a tri-party agreement, which is allowed under the subdivision control law and under which you're operating for this particular reason. So, I-
Thank you, I, I, I did under-
There shouldn't be any, any, um, uh, sort of mixing in of what's happening with phase four and the use of the existing pump station, since it has nothing, if it has nothing to do with phase two, because that's all been approved. It was, it was open to public discourse and use at the time of the public hearing. And there were no, to my mind, uh, in recollection, there were no, um, issues or contentions or anything taken up that said that phase two should not be going ahead the way it was approved. And that's all you're doing is working with phase two.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, I understood all of that. Um, and, and the only thing I was trying to determine is, will the town be at risk for sewer connections because of the confusion? And I had simply asked for the applicant to come in and explain to me in layman's terms, what's going on with the sewer at this property? And he hasn't done it. I, thank you for your, 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 I fully understood everything you said.
Okay.
I don't understand, I don't understand the design. I wanted them to do a walkthrough and show all the connections and talk to it. They haven't done that. I understand what you've said, based on the fact that this was approved, uh, as part of, uh, phase two last summer. Uh, and you're satisfied, um, that there's no crossover in the shoe and citizen issue. Um, and, and, uh, I, I take that as, as, uh, good input. But the applicant could have done the same and given me that feedback.
Okay, um, anybody else want to speak to this?
To back up for a moment, um, I'm, I'm still a little bit concerned about the prevailing wage rates, the labor rates. And whether this has been calculated using specifically the prevailing wage rates. Because they can be significant. And when you start multiplying them out, it can be problematic.
Are you talking about the existing list, Jane?
Yes, that if the town, if the town finds themselves in a position, finds itself in a position where it needs to step in and do the work, um, that I'm, I'm concerned that the, the numbers that they've carried for labor will cover doing that work at prevailing wage rates.
I, I doubt that. Uh, I doubt that the numbers that they're carrying as their labor cost would be, anything matching what the prevailing wage rates would be. But in terms of the approval of the amount, what you were actually approving is the total amount. You're really not approving any wage rates, you're not approving the materials cost or anything. What you're looking at is the overall number, which is a combination of those things. And you're adding a percentage of it, which hopefully would cover not only what the difference might be between what they've shown and what prevailing wage rates would be, as well as an increase in cost due to inflation.
Right, I, I guess I, I'm just concerned in, at how they calculated their, what they were using is the components of their calculation to arrive at the bottom.
Based on probably what their contractor can, uh, actually does. But, uh, I think Mr. Reynolds is, is on with you, and he could probably explain that to you better than I can.
Okay.
Chris, do you want to talk to that?
Hold on, I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, yes, uh, Jane, that was calculated with a contract with our current site contractor that's been performing the work. Um, there, there's not a huge difference in site contractors, um, wage rates in, uh, non-union settings versus union settings in today's world. You find that a lot more in like tile setters and, um, kind of non-skilled carpenters and things like that. You see a bigger difference. With the site work number, it's made up of not just labor as compared to carpentry and things like that, where there's a huge difference, especially when it's all just based on labor more than anything else. Site contracts based on equipment too, with all the machinery and the equipment. So there's not any difference between a prevailing wage equipment, obviously, and then the materials. So that's why Charlie's saying it's not just thirty-five percent on the labor, which would probably be, um, you know, would be a relative difference of saying, all right, if, uh, someone's making forty dollars an hour to make another sixty-five prevailing wage, which is around for an operator, I would understand your, your, uh, reservation. But it's thirty-five percent on everything, on the equipment and the materials. So you're getting thirty-five percent on the equipment costs as well. So you are getting, um, a factor of safety onto that already. It's not like I'm just saying thirty-five percent on the labor, I'm saying thirty-five percent on the equipment, material, everything.
Yeah, but my understanding is that thirty-five percent is, is for escalation as well. Um, and just to be clear, we're, uh, my concern is about between prevailing wage rates and standard rates. I don't know that there was any union, non-union, anyway.
Yeah, that's just a, a standard, uh, and when I say non-union, that's kind of the prevailing wage rate on a, um, job versus a non-union, non-pervailing wage project.
Okay, yeah, um, union rates are different from prevailing wage rates. But anyway, um, yeah, uh, my understanding was that the thirty-five percent was, was based on, on an esca, was in there as an escalation number, because time is going to pass. And I'm not sure what the anticipated duration of time is going to be. But that's what that thirty-five percent was covering, if I understood correctly.
I think it's for both. It's for escalation, it's for, for escalation as well as, um, as for that labor cost difference. And, you know, most of this work would be done, uh, this summer under the current contract, because to build homes, we obviously need, um, you know, to finish the water, sewer drainage, to be able to have any homes. The things that always lag is the final pavement and that, so you get it to binder. And that, you know, would have a longer timeframe, a finish on the sidewalks, to finish on some of the loom, um, and, uh, finish pavement. So there's not a, in, in the relatively shorter time, this construction window, I don't know, eighty percent of it would be used up, um, to get homes under construction, just to start working. And there would be twenty, twenty percent left over, that would be a longer timeframe. So it's not a long, long term of escalation costs based on the whole amount.
Do we have a sense of what the total duration of time is? Is there a drop dead date at which point the bond would be called or not? Or, uh, I, I don't understand that.
You, you get to set that, uh, Jane. Um, one of the things that typically is done is that you set a timeframe for completion of the project. Um, at the same time, uh, as portions of the project are completed, uh, the project owner can request a reduction in that security by proving that he has done, say, seventy-five percent of the water main or fifty percent of the drainage. And he can re, request a reduction, which he submits in writing to your board. And then you approve that, and you can, uh, then allow a, uh, a release of the money that's being held by the bank in order to pay off that portion of it.
Yeah, same as what happens with the retainage.
Yes, exact same thing. Um, but you do want to set a timeframe for, for the entire project to be completed, because you don't want this to be extended out beyond what would be reasonable for inflationary rates and whatever may happen three, four years from now.
I would think the bonding company would want to know that as well.
Exactly.
Okay, um, if-
A reasonable amount, a reasonable amount of time, just to interject, it would be, say, two years. And if it's not done in two years, then you better have a reason why and request an extension. Um, it may not take that long to do the majority of what Chris has described to you, but still, it's the total project that we're talking about, not just eighty percent of it.
Yeah, it's to take it all the way to the end.
Right.
Okay, um, any, anybody, any other board members need to, uh, to weigh in on this?
I'd recon move forward.
Okay, I, I think, Charlie, I think the thirty-five percent escalator is, is a good call. Um, it gives us a little bit of surety for the unknown. And obviously, the two years, I think, is more than reasonable, uh, for this phase. So having said that, I would entertain a motion to, uh, vote to accept, uh, the revised performance bond, no totals, uh, submitted by Charlie. Um, and the understanding that the, uh, phase two, uh, is completed within a two-year time period, from, from the date of, uh, of this meeting.
Well, Mr. Chair, can we agree on the number?
Uh, yeah, Charlie, what was that final? It was, it was-
Yeah, based on the, based on the adjustments that I did in the, uh, documentation, the total base amount was seven hundred and sixty-one thousand and sixty-one dollars. Seven six one zero six one.
Can I make one comment, Chair?
Yes.
One request?
Uh, yes.
Just because we're just coming out of winter, could we do twenty-eight months? Just so the final paving would be the last thing, so this way we could pave if it was at that time into that June, July timeframe, so just a twenty-six or twenty-seven month would be helpful.
I think that's not unreasonable, given that, that the asphalt, uh, plants closed down for the winter and you'd have to rely on them reopening, or you'd have a much shorter amount of time for doing the paving, which is something that you want to do kind of last.
Yeah, awesome, yeah, no, I agree. I think an additional four months is not an unreasonable request at all. Um, so I just did my, I just did my quick math. Uh, so the, the total number for the bond we will vote to approve for Bay Point Phase Two is one million twenty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars thirty-five cents, with the understanding that the work be completed, uh, within twenty-eight months of today's date. So I would entertain a motion.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason, uh, Carl.
And you abstain.
Carl abstains. Uh, Mike Dattist.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye, so that's, uh, four zero one. Was that gone phone again? Uh, thanks for coming in tonight, Chris, I appreciate, uh, giving us some clarification on that.
And, and if I could just make one comment to, to Carl. Um, we were planning tonight to come in to give a grand presentation, to answer all of those sewer questions. Obviously, that got postponed by some, uh, confusion. Uh, but that was the objective today, Carl, was to come back for that, to give you that presentation. Just wanted to-
Thank you, I, I, thank you, I, I appreciate that, I thank you very much for telling you that.
Your, your comments did not go on deaf ears, there was a lot of work done in these last, uh, two months since we were present, um, to you, and we were ready for a big show tonight, so, uh, the next meeting, we'll give you that, Carl.
I, uh-
I apologize if, if my, if my lack of understanding, um, is, is causing some confusion. But I, I read all the letters from the citizens, and I just want to make sure that I understand how they fit into the whole, thank you.
Yep, I get it.
Can I make a comment here?
Uh, the chair recognizes George, um, go ahead.
Hi, um, yep, as you may know, I'm the president of Bay Point Village condominiums. And just to speak to, um, what Carl was saying and what Engineer Raleigh was saying, um, we-
Wait a minute, George, before you get, before you, before you dive into it, George, d- does this test specifically have anything to do with the value of the bond?
No, it doesn't, that's why I didn't really want to speak, but there was just a little exchange that just went on there. I can speak to this later.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that very much.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Um, before we, we get into item number four, um, just out of respect to people that may or may not be sitting in the wings waiting for, um, continued public hearings, I'd like to run through those and, uh, vote on the continuances and kind of knock those off the agenda real quick. So, um, on continued public hearings, um, number one, vote on continuance to five nine for twenty-one dash twenty-one site plan review, Wareham, Mass. Ninety-one and one oh one Ferringill Road. Um, it's my understanding that there was a very late request by the applicant on this that, um, they request to withdraw this, uh, uh, application without precedence, is that, presence, precedence, prejudice, is that correct? Um, Ken?
Yes, it is, they've submitted a letter, uh, saying that they wanted to withdraw without prejudice and, uh, reapply.
Okay, so we would need to vote, um, to accept their request, I'm assuming?
Yes, you would.
Mr. Chair, question?
Yes, sir.
When did that come in?
It, it, it came in, um, let me see if I could find it, it was late. It was very, it was late afternoon that it showed up.
Today?
We, we were going to vote on a continuance on this, uh, anyway, and instead what we're doing is voting on a withdrawal.
How suspected by our, our policy?
Um, I think because they were already on the agenda, Sam, I don't, I'm not quite sure that it really has a, uh, has a, a negative effect. Um, because we-
Okay, I, I'll move forward.
The applicant isn't here, though. The applicant is not here, so we couldn't even vote on the continuing thing.
Well, they were on, they were, they were on the agenda, oh, yeah, correct. Well, they asked for a continuance, um, before the agenda was set, so actually, based on the policy that we discussed, they wouldn't- they wouldn't need to be here.
No, no, we voted clearly. Oh, no, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order. We voted clearly that we would not vote on any continuance for any applicant that was not in present. That was voted last week.
There was, um, there was some, uh, concern about, um, people that had to travel distances in order to come and say, I need a continuance. So we just, I, we discussed this with the, the, uh, planning office and we thought that it would be, um, prudent and somewhat respectful that if they put their request for a continuance in prior to the Wednesday that the agenda was set, that they wouldn't need to be present as long as their request was accompanied with a legitimate reason as to why the continuance was needed. If they requested the continuance after the agenda, then they had to be present.
Two points, Mr. Chairman. It, it's my opinion that, uh, a private meeting with the planning office doesn't overrule a vote by the planning board. Uh, and we should have been informed with that, uh, informed about that and had a right to review that. Second, uh, as we're running hybrid meetings, no applicant, a- and until we stop running hybrid, hybrid meetings, no applicant i- is forced to drive a long distance to participate. Those would be my two responses to that. To, to that, uh, decision. First, we should have been informed that, about that. Mr. Chair, I agree with Carl.
Okay, um, all right, well, we can definitely discuss what little, we, we can definitely discuss this.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, Mike, I'm okay. I understand, uh, I, I understand why and what happened. I'm also with Sam that we can, uh, move forward on this particular issue tonight. Um, I do have a question um, from, uh, through you to the planning office. Uh, given that we have an open public hearing on this item, do we need to take public comment on the request to withdraw?
If the, if the chairman so, uh, decides that he wants to allow public comment on the withdrawal, he can do that.
Wow, that was some bad feedback. Um.
You can.
Okay, those are great.
You can, you can take public comment if you want. You don't have to.
Okay, I, I think, I think in, in the case of a withdrawal request, I don't see where public comment would really have any great value. Um, so I, I, I would be inclined not to. Um, I would think, quite honestly, uh, for all the people that attend the meeting revolving around Farring Hill, they're probably welcoming this news. Uh, so if we took a comment, I would be getting a lot of high fives and good job.
No, excuse me, they're just gonna, they're gonna resubmit. Through you.
But.
Mr. Chairman, we have a raised hand. Annie Hayes.
Go ahead, Annie.
Um, Mr. Chair, hi. Did they, did they, um, have they, what is the word you use? Have they pulled out? Is that what they're doing? And then they say they would resubmit the whole project? Is that what's on the line here?
That is correct. They're going to withdraw the project in its entirety and possibly come back and resubmit it a later date. So as of right now, the project will not exist once we hold this vote to accept their withdrawal.
And, and Mr. Chair, does that still go under the freeze allowance?
Yes, it does.
It does.
Right, because.
Even though they withdrew.
They did withdraw the subdivision. The subdivision is what gives them eight years of protection.
That's right. Thank you.
All right, so it looks like we've, we've by default started accepting public, uh, comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this?
Mr. Chair, through you to planning board. Uh, Ken, you gave them an explanation of why you thought they are going to resubmit and why they pulled out? Because of the membership count?
That's right. They, um, they noted that there was a difference in the, uh, membership that, uh, there had been since the public hearing that started on their application, uh, members of the, of the planning board had changed. And there was a different group of people and involved in the, um, that had been through, uh, the whole whole period of, uh, public hearings. And so, uh, they only had, uh, four votes, uh, that were legitimate. They, they would have to be, uh, they would have to get all four to get their approval. So they, um, they wish to, which is, which is done in other instances as well in other communities. Uh, they, uh, decided to, uh, withdraw their, their current application, reapply, so they can put the, uh, put everything on the record again and, uh, have a full complement of five members of the planning board to vote on their application.
Um, you know, uh, Ken, we can, we can discuss this at a later date, but I was under the impression that when, when, um, when a, an applicant requested a continuance, whether they be in person or not, that they, that they, they submitted it with a, with an explanation as to why. And what you just stated, which it sounds like Sam was aware of, this is the first I've heard of it.
This, this is not a continuance, this is a withdrawal.
I, I understand that, but, but the reasoning behind it still stands. You have the information, Sam has the information, the rest of the board doesn't have the information. And I, I don't think that that's, I, I think when we have these, we, we have to be provided with the fact that they're requesting, you know, the continuance or the withdrawal and a detailed reason why, and that all the board members have it.
Mr. Chair, can I speak for a second?
Yes, sir.
The reason I have the information is when I got the withdrawal request, I called Ken for an explanation. I didn't have any information prior to or privy. I, I just called him this afternoon to ask a question.
Right, well, and, and, and that's, that's completely legitimate. I wasn't questioning that. But it shouldn't be a case of uh, every time, like the next one down, uh, for the modification special permit or, or the next one down for that. There's no reasoning behind it. We shouldn't have to prompt seven, six planning board members calling Ken for an explanation. It could just be an, an email sent out to the, to the board as a whole that states they've requested a, a continuance or a withdrawal in this case, and here are the reasons why. One of the last email, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, the letter asking for the withdrawal and the, and the resubmission came in today. Uh, this was a, a, a last minute decision on their part. Uh, uh, Sam just happened to call up, uh, to get the information, but the letter was sent, uh, sent out.
All right, is there, I see hands up. Um, Kyle?
Yeah, I have a process question, uh, presuming that we move forward with, uh, uh, allowing the withdrawal. What happens to the existing fifty-three G account? And the work that's being done by Horstley Witten?
That work is going to continue. Uh, they're going to put the same record on the, um, uh, they'll, they'll go through the hearing process again. There'll be a notification, uh, and there'll be a requirement that they put everything on the record and that's going to include the hydrogeologist's report that, uh, gets completed and, uh, is submitted to the, the board.
It will get completed under the current application even after they withdraw it? They're going to pay.
Fifty-three G account will be rolled over to the new, uh, new account.
So will the work that Horstley Witten's doing stop until they resubmit?
Uh, I'm not going to ask them to stop at this time since they've already been committed to doing the work and they've been taking a long time to do it.
No, that's my concern. I didn't, I, we would add a delay, but I'm also concerned that they get paid, paid for that work.
Yeah, they will get paid. They've been, that money's already been committed by contract to the, to the Horstley Witten Group.
Okay, so it, it comes out of the existing fifty-three G monies and.
That's right, it's already, it's already, it's already committed to that, uh, that contract.
Okay, so we, we won't add a delay to the, the hydrogeology study. Um, um, by this procedural issue. Thank you, that was my concern.
Okay. Is, uh, Ms., uh, Eric Lintala?
Yes, thank you. Uh, can we get a little more clarification on why they're withdrawing? And if they withdraw, we're going to start this whole process all over again. Is that based on just because the change in board members?
Yes. They're not confident that with the current board and the new members that they're going to get, they have a, a, a chance at a vote.
And they can do this?
They can.
Huh. That's kind of discouraging.
Ken, if, if, if we, if we elect to reject their request, what, what's the process going forward?
You, you continue on the public hearing process, uh, take their continuation request that they had submitted. Uh, and, uh, voted essentially, voted on the application at, at some time in the future with the members who are, um, authorized to, uh, vote on it.
Okay, um. I think, uh, Kyle, is he up again, or is it just still up? Okay, I guess that means something, yeah. Um. I'm going to, I'm going to put this to the board, um, unless, is there any other public comment before we move forward? Okay, I haven't hearing none and seeing no requests.
What, one, uh, Mr. Chairman, one more procedural question. Um, before we, before we take a vote on the withdrawal, do we have to close the public hearing?
Uh, no.
I, I'm gonna, um, I'm, I'm going to entertain a vote that we accept their request for a continuance to five-nine with the, with caveat that we request the withdrawal without prejudice. Um, there's, there's been, there's been a, a ton of work done, uh, on this project. Um, and I think Mr. Lintala had an excellent point that, um, to, to clog it up the board's time by starting this process all over again and regurgitating the same information doesn't serve, doesn't serve any positive purpose. Um, you know, they've, they, they've, uh, they've taken up quite a bit of time, um, on, on these agendas. And I think it, it merits that we just continue on and, uh, reject the withdrawal request.
Chairman? You're, um, one of the reasons why this has continued on so long is because of the hydrogeologists, um, that we requested be included in the review of the, of the project. And that has added, uh, uh, many months to the review process. Uh, there's, there's, uh, in the, in the actual operation of the, of the hearing, uh, there is no reason to go over the information that, uh, again, and repeat it. Uh, all we do is take the record of the previous, uh, public hearing and put it on the record as, uh, part of this application, of the new application and, uh, uh, so we'd essentially be seamless in, uh, input to the, the process.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the planning office. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I understand your explanation, um, Mr. Buckland. However, if the purpose is to bring, um, Ms. Gleason and Ms. Quirk up to speed, uh, we can't do it by just accepting all that into the record. Uh, if we, if we're truly, um, I, I'm asking, I'm, I'm making a statement, but I'm asking this as a question. Um, would they have to then certify that they go back and have reviewed all that testimony and reviewed all of the, uh, the hearings? How, how do we effectively bring them up to speed, um, by just starting over?
You, you do it the same way that you have, that you, um, and the project yourself, uh, that, uh, information is supplied to the board and, uh, you review it and, uh, make a, a determination as to the appropriateness of the, of the information and, uh, what the, uh, uh, how that impacts the criteria of the, of the zoning bylaws and whether or not it conforms to those criteria. Uh, it's something that you do and, and regardless of, of, uh, how much information is, is supplied or when it's supplied to you. Uh, what we're doing is just, uh, uh, restarting the process so that, uh, a, a full complement of, of board members is, uh, is part of the hearing process.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I make?
That's bullshit.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Sam.
Uh, could we copy the members with everything that we've received from public comments from different groups, Pine Barons and everything else that we've received? If they had a copy of everything we've received, it might make it a little easier for them to, to jump into the process.
All the information is online already.
So, so. So regardless of whether we accept the withdrawal request or whether we just vote to continue, um, our two of us members are still going to have to dive into this and absorb it. Yes?
No.
That's correct.
I don't think so. Well, I don't think they'll be eligible to vote. Having missed that many public hearings.
Not if you continue it, no.
Right, so to, the answer to Mr. King is no, um, the two new board members, um, would not be eligible to vote on this application if we continue it.
Okay. All right, well, I guess to be fair to the applicant, um, then I would entertain, uh, we. I would entertain a request, we, a motion to accept the request to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Full moon.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, uh, so motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Kyle Schultz. This is a vote to accept the request to withdraw the application twenty-one dash twenty-one site plan review, Wareham, Mass. Ninety-one and one-on-one Farring Hill Road, uh, without prejudice. Uh, with the vote, Kyle?
No.
Uh, could we, could we mute the public, please? I, Annie, I appreciate your frustration. Um, my understanding of, of what we're doing, um.
Basically, what we're doing, we're kicking the cane down the road.
You know, I, I understand that. What, what, based on, I, I, I'm trying to explain my vote. So that if it comes back, um, based on the feedback from the planning office, that the two additional board members will, um, and, and I guess they'll have to vote, uh, uh, their conscience, will have to bring themselves up to speed uh, on the entire history of this project because we're, we're going to start over, but we're starting over from the point we're at.
Um, well, that would be only if we vote on a continuance.
No, no, you, we vote, no, no, we're vote, I'm voting on your motion, which is to keep their withdrawal.
Right, but if, if we accept their withdrawal, then they come back and they start from square one. So all that.
No, no, that's not, that's not what Mr. Buckland says. All the information gets ported forward. We don't really need to take public testimony.
Um, well, we haven't closed the public hearing yet, but yes, you're right.
Well, we'll effectively close it if we withdraw the, uh. the petition. So my understanding of the process, that's what I'm voting on, is my understanding of the process. If we vote yes on this motion to withdraw this application without prejudice, which means they can resubmit immediately, if we, if, if we had prejudice, they'd have to wait two years. I believe two years. And the process would be horsely written, will continue their study and produce their results. And that will be in the record for the new application. As well as all of the input that we've gotten to date will be part of the record somehow. Is there an official process carry, it's just by this boat? But all of that becomes.
All right, can I, can I ask? Can I, can I ask one question? Let's see if we can just clear this up because this is starting to drag. If, if the board votes to request, to accept the request as stated without prejudice, then to Kyle's point, they can, they can reapply tomorrow if they want, correct?
That's correct.
If we elect to continue, then the only way that the fifth voting member being Jane could possibly weigh in on this is if she certified that she reviewed every, every planning board meeting, every piece of correspondence that has been accepted by the board to date, is that correct?
I don't believe that's possible on the, the Mullen rule applies to the missing one hearing.
Okay, all right. And if we vote to accept the withdrawal with prejudice, then, then they're not allowed to reapply for two years.
That's right, but they didn't offer it with, with prejudice, that's gonna be your decision on that.
Correct, but if, but if we decide that we want to move forward with prejudice, it's in our purview to do that tonight without any further input from them?
I would, I would expect that they would appeal the decision, but yeah, that's possible.
All right, well, there's a motion on the table and it's seconded. Unless you withdraw the motion, I'm going to vote aye.
As am I, you gotta go forward.
Yeah, I agree.
Turn a little bit more.
The motion's on the table. The motion is on the table to accept the request for withdrawal without prejudice. Motion by, accepted by Kyle Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. So we'll take a vote, Kyle?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
No.
Jane Gleason?
Abstain.
Sherry can't weigh in. I am inclined to vote aye. Ken, does three votes get us to where we need to be, or do we have to have four?
No, you can accept the withdrawal by three votes.
All right, so the withdrawal for, the request for withdrawal without prejudice is accepted. Three, one, three, zero, three, one, zero.
Three, one, one, three, one, one.
Three, one, one, I'm sorry, yes, three, one, one. Okay, here I thought this was going to speed things along by going to this section and I shot myself in the foot. Can you? Now, where we're accepting, accepting this, do we need to close the public hearing?
No, by with, accepting withdrawal, you've closed the hearing as well.
Okay, okay. Continued public hearings, item number two. Hearing and possible vote, 36-1 modification of special permit site plan review Bay Point Club LLC Phase Four, 19 Bay Point Drive, map nine lots 1,004B, 1,004A-1-7, new eight unit townhouse.
Mr. Chairman, you're, you're skipping over what you intended to do, which was look at the ones that are running continuance.
But this one did request a continuing. Isn't this, isn't this the one that Charlie wasn't given an opportunity to review the new plans?
That's right.
Okay, and Tim, Tim Fay at four o'clock this afternoon realized that, that that Charlie did not get the opportunity to review the plans. And because of the size of the team that he assembled for the presentation, felt that it wasn't in his best interest to, to present. And he, and he requested that we put this off and I would have to agree with him. It's unfortunate because I know we had the plans, but there was some communication error that didn't get the plans into Charlie's hands in the timely fashion. So they're gonna, they're requesting a continuance as well.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
The email I got from Aaron said that he would let me know when the plans were in the office. I assume he meant by that the hard copies are the hard copies in your office, Ken? Or is it just the ones that are on, on file on the website?
The hard copies have been in my office since last week and Aaron said he had mentioned that to you as well.
No, all he said was that the, he'd let me know when they were available and that was his last email. I said, okay, and that was it. Otherwise, I would have picked them up.
I requested that we have a small change in procedures in the planning office where any a telephone call notifications concerning documents or whatnot be followed up with a, with a an email so that there's a hard record of the fact that the notification. Now, we don't know what, what happened, you know, whether the the breakpoint was in, in letting you know that those documents were available.
I'll go to the planning office tomorrow and pick them up.
All right, super, thank you, Charlie.
Was this due to our schedule to have the hearing and the final vote on the second?
That, that was going to be my question. I, I suggest that we need to add at least if we're going to get a big presentation on the ninth, that we wouldn't, I wouldn't be prepared to vote at that point.
Well, actually, Tim sent a quick email to me once we talked about the the continuing tonight because of the information break. Came in as we've been speaking and he asked if it was a possibility that we could do a special meeting specifically for this before the night so that we would still be prepared to vote on the night.
I don't see, well, no. But I'll listen to the board.
I don't know, I'm open for comments from the board on, on this. I mean, I have no feelings on it one way or another, to be quite honest.
I do. We met with Tim Fay. We came to agreement. You'd think that he'd do a full court press and check every box, make sure everything was done. This has been going on for so long. We've got to end this sometime. I mean, I, the second, the fourth, the 11th, the ninth. This is what we've been doing for, for close to a year. I came on the 11th, April of last year. Shortly thereafter, the Bay Point came up and it's been on every agenda since. I used to kind of sort of my stuff today to get organized. My Bay Point file is two inches thick.
Yeah.
I mean, we're trying to move forward.
I, I am as frustrated as Sam, but technically Phase Four wasn't submitted until October. Phase one, phase two and three, we did last summer and approved. And Phase Four was submitted in September, excuse me, October, I believe.
And, and, and I, Sam, trust me, I mean, you and I were in that meeting with Tim Fay, so you know my feelings as well on the subject. But the reality is, is this, this delay for tonight was really our doing, not his. He had the information in when he was supposed to. It never got to Charlie for a timely review so that he'd be prepared to, to talk about it tonight. So I, I don't know how we can hold them accountable for something that happened under our control.
I understand, Mr. Chair, but you'd think if I was Tim Fay, I would have personally driven to Charlie's point of business and made sure he had them. I mean, that's just what I have done. I would have made sure every single solitary thing was done, full court press, make sure everything is done. And it may be our fault, but the meeting we were at, everybody agreed. Full court press to make sure everything is done and we're not.
Yep. I, I agree, I would have been the same way. Why he didn't do it for himself, I mean, it's his project, it's his money. I'm not quite sure why he doesn't stay on top of it either, but that's, that, that's, you know, between him and the guy, narrow.
Mr. Chair, if I may speak for a second in regards to that, I've
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, we, in the past, I've, I've asked if I could drop stuff off at Charlie's house and he always says procedurally, no, that's not the way to do it. Submit it to.
Yeah, no, I would have to agree, it really should be delivered to the planning office, not to Charlie directly.
Both.
It's just it, it's just unfortunate, it was a, it was an error in procedures. It, it happened under our watch. And as irritating as this is and as hard as we tried to get this to the point where we were ready to vote on it on May 9th, you know, what are we going to do?
Mr. Chairman, I think I need to I think I need to weigh in just a little bit, Mr. Chairman, on this. It's unfortunate the plans did not get to me in time. Nevertheless, I did take the opportunity to check the website to see what the response was from the Principi organization. And it's easy to see when you look at the list that they prepared, that they made some very simple changes when all it amounted to was changing this or that on the plan and did not affect some of the more major details of the plan or some of the major things that were in my letter. Not everything that was in my letter pertained to the plan. Several things that were in the letter pertain to the fact that there were four previous reports that I had put together with information in there, which I had submitted to the board for consideration. And there are some items in there, the drainage being one, accessible routes being another, which neither I nor Mr. Principi are going to agree upon. We have a different point of view in terms of what should happen. And I think it's only with a discussion with you as a board can bring that to a conclusion. I was informed today, my, my Mr. Fay, that he had actually gone to the building inspector to get a determination as to whether or not accessible routes were essential to his project. And he informed me that the building inspector said that it wasn't. Well, that's diametrically opposed to an email that I got from the building inspector about three weeks ago. So it's this kind of thing that needs to be talked about with the, with the board as a whole. And my review of the plans will not change that fact one iota. There's a lot in that documentation on both sides that needs to be reviewed by you as a board. And my just getting the plans again and checking off a few things that were in my latest letter and comparing it to one Pritchimbi's office did will not change that fact. So there's a lot that needs to be discussed at an open meeting. Whether you do it now, whether you do it two weeks from now or on the 9th of May, doesn't make any difference. And it won't make any difference when I get the plans reviewed, those things are still going to be outstanding.
And those, they really probably should be addressed, obviously, before the next meeting so that we don't burn another meeting arguing over, over details that we should have the answers to those details.
That's the point, Mike, there's only, there's only so much that I can do to review these things and then there's other things that are going to remain hanging there that there's not going to be any agreement on. And they need to be brought to your attention. And I, I can't solve that as an individual and I refuse to do it in a meeting which is, does not include your board because I work directly for you.
Yep. All right. Ken, how clogged up is the May 9th meeting getting?
You're continuing a lot of these applications to May 9th. One option you have is to go to May 2nd and, and add another meeting in between since you're going to be
Yeah, I'm not inclined to do that.
Short on the agenda on the 25th of this month.
Yeah, I, I, I I'm not really inclined to do that. I'm not going to ask the board to put another meeting together because we can't get Iraq together on, on this particular project and it's the issues are on both sides of the fence. It's, it's not all him, it's not all us, but it, it just seems like I, I can understand why Sam is getting so frustrated because it's getting frustrating for me too. It's chewing up, chewing up time out of our lives that we shouldn't be spending on it.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
Certainly.
Okay, I worked for a real estate company that put this company together two years ago to promote the Winwood Pines. Spent a lot of money on posters and pamphlets and you name it. They have not got ROI, ROI on anything. You've got people that have sold their houses waiting for this to happen. And there's one woman comes into our office every week, says, what's happening? There are people that put down large deposits, years, no, I'm sorry, months ago, that are worried. They're now talking to lawyers. There are agents that have put in over a year's time with open houses and showings and calls and they've got a commission for a year. And they've worked their butts off. There's one guy who's worked almost nothing but and he hasn't got a penny in a year. These are things that you, you may or may not know, but I know these people and know the company. And these people who have sold their houses and waited for this to happen is horrific. And I, I know part of it's been our fault, part of it's been their fault. But we've got to get together, Charlie, stay, everybody's got to get together and put this to bed. It's been way too long and too many people have been hurt so far. I think we need to get it done as soon as possible, take the special meeting, I'm involved for it. I just want to get this done, Mr. Chair. Somehow, some way, get it done.
All right. We could take all right, let, let's do this. I'll entertain a motion to accept the request for continuance for 36-21 Bay Point Drive and move it to a special hearing for Monday, May the 2nd. And we'll see if we can't get through this on that, that special meeting. Ken, can we, can we can we restrict that meeting day to strictly this subject?
You're in charge, whatever you want, yes, you can.
Okay, all right, so to restate, entertain a motion to continue or to accept the request for continuance for 36-21 Bay Point Club LLC Phase Four to special meeting for Monday, May 2nd, 2022. And this, this particular project will be the only thing on the meeting agenda with the anticipation of resolving all the unanswered questions so that come the regular scheduled meeting of May 9th, we're prepared to vote.
Thank you, and I make that.
Thank you, and I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carl Schultz, take a vote. Uh, Carl?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
I'm on the fence.
I'll come back to you.
Yeah.
Dane?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so Mike, it's your call.
Well, long, long as we don't go through the same bullshit, we have been for the last four years with the same applicant. Uh, you know, we request information, it always gets circumvented, and we're chasing our tail around. Now we're blaming ourselves for being the bad guy.
Well, we, we, we did, we did, in the meeting with Tim, we did state quite equipably that we are prepared to vote on this come May nine. So if he arrives to the meeting on May second, he'll prepared, it's, it's just not going to bode well for him for the, the final vote.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll go along with the program this time, but that's it. I'm all done.
I agree, Mike.
All right, so votes five zero zero to continue thirty-six twenty-one to the special meeting scheduled for Monday, May the second. Uh, continued public hearings, number three. Hearing a possible vote, site plan review, um, oh no, they didn't request a continuance, so we'll leave that on the agenda where it is. Um, agenda item number four, vote on continuance to five nine, site plan review for Three Kendrick, Kendrick Road. Uh, map one oh eight, lot one zero zero six dash C Crumpet Manufacturing Facility. Did, Ken, did we get a reason why they asked for the continuance?
Yes, it's because, uh, they haven't had the review for Charlie to, uh, the town engineer consulting review.
They didn't have it prepared for Charlie?
Uh, we didn't have the fifty-three G account set up for, uh, for Charlie's, uh, to, to start on the review.
Okay.
They have it now, uh, Mr. Chairman, and I have started the review, so I will be ready for the, uh, the next meeting, which is May ninth.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Charlie. All right, so I would entertain. Stephen Nancy, is your hand up concerning the Three Kendrick Road?
It's been up since, uh, the last one. That May second meeting, will that be an open meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I, I missed your hand. I apologize.
Okay, thanks.
So I entertain a motion to accept the request continuance to May nine for project two, two dash twenty-two, site plan review, Three Kendrick Road, Three Kendrick Road LLC, map one oh eight, lot one zero zero six dash C Crumpet Manufacturing Facility.
I'll move.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason, take a vote. Carl?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five zero zero to continue. Uh, item number five, vote on continuance to five nine, site plan review, five Dodie Street, Jason St. Martin, map one oh three, lot ten twenty, parking lot. Um, was, was there a reason for their request as well, Ken?
Yeah, same reason that Charlie hadn't gotten the chance to do his review on it yet.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so I entertain a motion to vote on the, well, first of all, it's burning public input. Hearing none and seeing none, I would entertain a motion to vote on can, accepting the request for continuance to five nine for project three dash twenty-two, site plan review, five Dodie Street, Jason St. Martin, map one oh three, lot ten twenty-seven, parking lot.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason, take a vote. Uh, Carl?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five zero zero to continue. Okay. Back to preliminary business, item number four, vote for vote of endorsement, ten dash twenty-two approval not required, Sarah John Realty LLC, one fifty Blackmore Pond Road, map sixty-nine, lot one zero zero eight. Is the applicant here to speak to this?
Yes, Sam, I am Melly with J C Engineering.
Okay, Sam, the floor is yours.
All right, the, uh, project here is one fifty Blackmore Pond Road, which, uh, is a six acre parcel that lies within the R sixty zoning district. Um, here, we're simply looking to create three lots from this one existing parcel, all having adequate area and adequate frontage along Blackmore Pond Road. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any of the questions the board may have.
Um, I reviewed this earlier today, and I didn't see anything that caught my eye. Um, Charlie, you, you, do you see anything that raised an eyebrow?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, one thing that is of concern is lot number three having the frontage on, uh, Blackmore Pond Road.
Yes, lot three has, if you follow the plan, a hundred sixty-seven point five feet along the curve with an additional twelve point five feet along a straightaway, um, equalling a hundred and eighty feet.
The. But lot, uh.
Where's the twelve feet come from?
Right.
The twelve and a half feet is along the straightaway of, of Blackmore Pond Road.
How about in here?
Where the, where the triangle is, where, where, where it says map sixty-nine, lot one zero zero six?
If you travel down the road opposite to that, um, the, it would be the northwest corner of that lot. If you zoom in there, you can see the, um, the twelve and a half feet noted.
Okay, I must be blind because I'm not seeing it.
Right where the cursor is right now.
Yeah, it's right there, Ken, on Mike.
Oh, I see, yep.
A little short, straight piece of the layout that's twelve and a half feet long, and then you add that to the hundred and sixty-seven fifty, and you get a hundred and eighty feet, so it would comply.
Okay. Charlie, explain to me as a layman what the purposes of, of that marker being at the twelve, twelve and a half foot mark and not having that line run all the way.
Past the. It's, it's an arbitrary thing that they divided the lot that way. Um, they, they had to do it because they had to start at the upper end where that little triangle is that you spoke of. They have to start measuring at that point, and they, they could not get a hundred and eighty feet completely within the curve, so they had to go beyond that sufficient distance to get it.
I see what you're saying.
So they end up with a little piece of the, the straight line that's a part of the layout of Blackmore Pond Road.
Yep.
That's the only reason it's there.
Okay, I get it. Okay.
I don't, you asked me if there was any other thing on the, um, on the plan. I don't see anything, although I can't read it to see whether or not it has the statement that it's not making a determination as to zoning. Is that on the plan anywhere?
That should be in the notes in the bottom right-hand corner.
Okay, I just can't read it because the plan is too small.
Oh, yeah, it's.
Here, it's fine.
It, it's there, Charlie. It's, um, item number nine. On, on that, that list under the notes.
Oh, okay, I see it. Yep, all right. Um, yeah, everything else seems to be fine.
Very cool. Thank you for your input, Charlie. You're always a wealth of knowledge. Um, uh, any of the members, uh, have any, anything, concern or input on this? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, I would entertain a vote to endorse ten dash twenty-two approval not required, Sarah John Realty LLC, one fifty Blackmore Pond Road, map sixty-nine, lot one zero zero eight.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. Uh, the vote. Uh, Carl?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Jane? And the chair votes aye, five zero zero to endorse.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Sorry that we kind of held you up.
No worries.
Uh, one thing I'm going to need is the, uh, board members to come in and sign the, um, the MyR as soon as possible.
I'll come in, I can come in tomorrow.
I won't be available till Thursday or Friday, Ken, but I'll, or Thursday, I guess. If I'm back, I'll come in.
Thank you.
Uh, vote, let's see, item number five, for discussion and vote to reappoint the Serphead member from the Wareham Planning Board. Uh, currently, I've been doing a lousy job of representing. Um, but I do have a little bit more time on my hands than I did before. So if there's, uh, if there's no else that, um, would, uh, enjoy representing the board at the Serphead meetings once a month, I, I will continue on if you like, or if there's somebody that would like to be involved, uh, by all means, raise your hand.
I, I move that we reappoint Mike King to the, as the planning board rep to Serphead.
Why aren't you on your big system?
Because I had this here, so I'm starting the meeting with the phone.
Uh, okay, so a motion to reappoint myself to Serphead, and a second by Jane, uh, buy a vote. Carl?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And I am going to abstain. So fours, four zero one. Kyle and Jane, you're no longer my best friends.
It's just payback.
Okay, item number six, for vote of endorsement, Wareham Housing Assessment and Production Plan. Um, for my own two points, I read this thing cover to cover, and for all that put the work into it, Bravo. You can, you can tell by the, by the data collected that, that there was a ton of work that was put into that. So I was really impressed. Um, so this, this basically is, is just a vote, uh, of the board to, uh, to endorse the, uh, production plan as it's written. Um, is there any input from the board members?
Good job.
Yeah, I, it took me a while to get through it, but it was really well done. It'll open my eyes up.
That was the planning office, and, uh, Ms. Slaven had a lot of, uh, comment. Um, the Affordable Housing Trust supports this, this document. Um, so I'm in favor.
Okay. Um, any other input from board members? Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion for the planning board of Wareham to vote, uh, to cast a vote of endorsement for the Warehouse, Wareham Housing Assessment and Production Plan as written.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a, a, a battle for.
Sam can have it.
Okay, motion by Sam, by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carl Schultz, uh, with the vote. Carl?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five zero zero. Really well done, guys. I was really impressed with that.
Thanks. I'd like everybody to know that it worked on.
Uh, public hearings on zoning articles. Article nineteen, Springtown Meeting Warrant, amend the town of Wareham zoning bylaws for solar energy generation facilities moratorium. Maybe I missed something. I thought the moratorium, uh, article had been pulled. Did I, did I misunderstand?
It's on the warrant right now.
It is.
Annie should have answered that because it was her, uh, her, her petition article.
Okay, um, Annie, are you with us?
She was.
Yeah, I, I know she was with us earlier. Um, so what exactly, without Annie to, to chime in, Ken, what exactly is it that we're supposed to be discussing?
Well, this is a zoning article that, uh, sets a, a one-year moratorium on all, um, um, large-scale ground-mounted solar energy, uh, collection facilities. Um, it, uh, says that in that time, there'll be a, uh, uh, an attempt to improve the, uh, zoning bylaw.
Okay, um. Sherry, I know you had some concern about, about how the, the bylaw for, for solar was being presented. Did this one have any concerns, or was it strictly the, uh, the, um, five nine, uh, section five ninety, that was more your concern?
Well, this one, uh, is of some concern to me as well. And, you know, I've spent a little bit of time looking at the Attorney General's opinion on the, um, uh, the bylaw passed last year, and have, uh, tried to come up to speed and understand uh, what the Attorney General is looking for in this area. And, uh, it looks to me as if the Attorney General is, um, speaking more favorably about the idea of a moratorium, uh, as long as it's limited in time. Uh, but also, um, there's some language in the opinion that talks about what a town should be thinking about and should be saying about why it wants a moratorium. And, uh, the, the reasoning should be so that the, uh, the town can get a real understanding and do studies of the impact of any bylaws on solar development. And so, uh, my concern here would be that as this is presented and goes forward, assuming that it does, uh, that its presentation carefully explain the rationale for, uh, the moratorium, the limitation in time on it, and that it be justified within the language of, uh, the Attorney General's, uh, letter, and, uh, you know, I've already confessed that I spent many years as a lawyer. One of the things that happens to you when you do that is you become very conscious of language and, uh, the need for particular language to be used in particular, uh, situations. And here, I would just, um, suggest going forward, uh, that the proponents of this uh, pay close attention to what the Attorney General is looking for. And, you know, I think in terms of, um, the Attorney General's preferences, she seems to, uh, find the idea of a moratorium more, more acceptable. Uh, and, um, but at the same time, has laid out a roadmap for, uh, other restrictions like the amended bylaws that we've already discussed, uh, to adhere to. And so again, in that situation, I would say very important going forward to make. And so again, in that situation, I would say very important going forward to make sure that we look at that language. And give that language what, what it wants.
Okay, um. Now you, i- if I remember right, one of your concerns was that we, that we really zero in on uh. Health and welfare of the public as our basis for not restricting, but you know, having uh. Somewhat restrictions on, on what's allowed and what's not.
That's right, that's. That, that's directly from the statute. The statute says, you know, essentially that uh, that towns should allow solar development. Except in the cases of health, safety, or welfare. Um, which the town then has to weigh against solar development.
Okay. Um, I guess my question is, you know, uh, reading this article and then reading. Um, the uh. The article five, section five ninety, and the article three, section three twenty. Where we're trying to tighten up language in one warrant article and we're trying to stop solar for a year in the other. Do the, do the two fight with one another?
They.
Work in.
They, they achieve different goals, I think. Um, one, they're both, they, they are the same subject matter, it's the same. Article of the bylaws that is being addressed. Um, and I, I assume uh, both would be presented uh, to the town meetings. Uh, and um, the people would vote on, on the articles and they would be uh, sent to the Attorney General, is, is my understanding. And uh, the Attorney General uh, you know, can act on, on both as I understand, but others may have a better. Better understanding of what the precise um, process would be, but there is no question that they are the same subject matter. But I, I could see both of them going forward.
Okay, that, that was my concern is, is that presenting one and then the other and then having one undermine the other. What was, was really what I was concerned about, but now that you've explained it that way, it sounds, it sounds um, a little better.
I, I, I believe that it will completely undermine the other bylaw. But I have a question, uh, so that's my opinion, um.
I'll have a response to that, but go ahead.
Um. First of all, uh, the applicant isn't here, the original language of this uh. Warrant and I, and I was hoping to get an understanding of why it changed was, there was a second clause and if you read, I believe if you read. The paper submission, the second clause completely rescinded section five ninety. Of the bylaw and is, uh, I guess I'll ask Mr. Buckland, because that's not on the uh, warrant as printed. That's not, but that's what was signed by the applicants, right?
That was signed in the petition article that uh, was submitted to the town clerk, but I believe that um. Uh, the town moderator can allow the uh, petitioner to uh, submit a uh, modification on the floor of town meeting so long as it uh. Pertains to the original petition. Uh, some modified version of the um, of the article.
So are you saying you believe that that clause will be added back in, or that that has been dropped?
I might believe is it, it, it was, it was, uh, my reading of the first one of, of the petition article was it was not in there. But it, it could be added to the uh, uh, article as it's presented on, on the floor of town meeting.
Okay, so that would make it completely antithetical to the other article. Um, and the other uh, understanding when I read this, there's a recommendation that uh, further study. Be conducted, my question is who's gonna do that study? Uh, we've spent seven months, citizens uh, from the town spent seven months. Uh, looking at bylaws, looking at the state uh, regulations and, and, and did their best to come up with a. Uh, 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 and improved, I'm gonna use the word improved, bylaw, what, what does the applicant think is going to happen? With further study, uh, that she'll get the answer she likes? So that's my. Who's gonna do the study, I guess is my, my question.
Is that directed to me?
No, no, it's directed to the applicant who's not here.
Okay.
Or the submitter, or whomsoever.
Yeah. And you know, to go back to your, your first point about uh, the moratorium undermining the amended bylaws. Because I just, I don't see it that way, I see them as two different approaches. And I think if um, if the amended bylaws pass muster with the Attorney General, I think those supplant. The uh, the moratorium. Because then, then the town will have uh, successfully put in place. Uh, a regulatory scheme that, that, that passes muster, so that's the way that I see it. I don't think that you would have a moratorium that would, uh, that would circumvent. Uh, you know, the, the bylaws except if the Attorney General found them to be legally insufficient.
You, you believe that both would pass, my, my fear would be is the moratorium is, is pretty simple to understand. The uh, amended bylaw is, is quite, could be perceived as being quite complicated, my. My fear is, is that the moratorium would pass and the amended bylaw won't and. Then all that work down the toilet.
Well, um, I mean, I can appreciate.
I respect, I respect that the uh, citizens petition, they have the right to submit that.
Yeah, and, and I, I mean, I'd feel very awkward being in the situation where. After all the work that's been done and the time that went into putting together the amended bylaws. Uh, the Attorney General's opinion came out when it did. And if I were in your position, I would, I'm sure I would feel exactly the, the same way. Um, I'm just looking at this from the standpoint of trying to figure out. Risk and attainment of um, of the goal of getting a handle on solar development in the town. Uh, you know, I'd be perfectly happy if the amended bylaws were adopted. You know, I'm just looking at uh, an Attorney General opinion that seems to favor the idea of a moratorium, so I, I think. Actually, uh, both are worth, worth supporting.
I, I want to clarify that the um, the, I, that the Attorney General's support of a moratorium was because of the wording of the um. Of the explanation and the uh, and the bylaw that was previously passed by a town meeting. Uh, it was very restrictive, it was uh, uh, it was so restrictive that it was intended to essentially uh, put a stop. Uh, to uh, uh, all applications for uh. Uh, solar fields, in, in which case, uh, it was, it was, it was so stated in the explanation of the Planning Board. And in, in reading that, the Attorney General said, uh, uh, you can't uh, uh. Create a moratorium that, in that way, in that fashion. Uh, what you've done is you've created a restrictive bylaw that is unusable. Uh, uh, for uh, uh, solar development. So that uh, your only option is to, uh, your, your legitimate option is to create a moratorium, so that's if we wanted to stop. All development again of, of solar fields, we should put in a, a moratorium rather than. Try to restrict it by bylaw, but what we have is the choice between uh, something that says uh, no more. Uh, uh, development of, of uh, no applications for another year. Or the application of the uh, the new bylaw, it has been worked on and uh. Uh, has, is, is legitimate and it considers the health and welfare and safety of the residents of the town. And the um, uh, the legitimate right of uh, solar development within the community.
Yeah, and you know, I agree with a lot of that Ken, I think uh, the only point I'm making. Is that uh, that I think there, there are two paths here, which I don't see as uh, conflicting with each other. I read the Attorney General's opinion as being more supportive of a moratorium limited in time for the purpose of further study. Which, which the town would need to do, further study of restrictions. And uh, I view that as less risky, more likely to be sustained by the Attorney General. The bylaws, I think, um, you know, can go before the Attorney General. And I think, uh, you know, I think we'll, we'll see what the Attorney General does, I just see it as a little bit more risky, that's my, that's my point. And the best thing to do going forward, uh, which is my, you know, real point is that. Uh, each proponent should tie uh, tie their, their proposal as closely as possible to the language in the letter, and that's really it.
And would it make sense? If, if these articles were presented in a specific order? You know, if we, if we presented article nineteen first. And, and, and. Got behind a moratorium for a year. Um, you know, I, I agree with Kyle, you know, the, the sentiment of the, the voting public. It, it, I mean, solar is kind of a hot top, a hot button topic in this town, so. As soon as they hear a moratorium, no solar fields for a year, the chances that it's gonna pass is, is gonna be overwhelmingly yes, just based on emotion. But if we did that one first. And then brought the um. The section five ninety up. And presented it as. You know, having uh, the townspeople vote and approve a moratorium which gives us a year, now we present these, these changes to the zoning bylaws. That gives us a little bit more uh, control over what's going on. And during this coming year, we just continue to, to, to um. Investigate ways to, to promote smart development and, and not just runaway development. Do, do you think that we, we would stand a chance of getting them both? Um. To pass muster at town meeting if we presented them in that order and in that fashion?
My opinion is that that, that uh, sounds like a good strategy.
Uh.
But to, to the point, uh, two points.
One, there, there, one is on special town meeting and one is on the town meeting, so they're on different agendas. And two, articles are presented by lottery, you cannot control the order in which they're presented.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that Madam Moderator can, can pick an article out of order.
That I don't know.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that that's the case.
Also, I, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt whoever was starting to speak, but uh, the, the other potential development is that there's some case law being made now. Uh, a case involving, I think it's Waltham. Uh, the tracer case that could provide some additional insight into what the state of the law is on this as well. Sorry.
Any other board members comment before I open it up to the public?
Mr. Chair. I, I agree with Carl, I think you put a moratorium on for a year and then you're right back where you started. Who's going to further study it? We had a committee that further studied it for, I don't know Carl, nine months. And I think they did a real good job, uh, it was a ton of work and I think. The Attorney General would like that one versus the moratorium with no committee being appointed, no commitment to do anything. It's certainly further studied by whom and what are they gonna do?
Well, wouldn't um. Wouldn't, i- if we presented five ninety in concert with this between the two meetings. Wouldn't that effectively be the further, further study, it's already been done?
It's been done.
But, but this, this would buy us a, 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 a year, which would give the Attorney General time to review it and approve it. Assuming they approved the moratorium. But there really wouldn't be any other further study required because the, the solar team has already, has already done it, it's, it's in the article. I just, I, I, I'm, I believe Kyle, my fear is, is that. If we put them both up together without tying them together. Um, article nineteen will pass strictly on emotion. And.
Oh, no, no.
Right, and, and the work that, that, that Carl and his team have done is labor intensive, it's detailed. For the average voter, it's boring as hell. And I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that it'll get through, it might get through on its own, I mean, it, I, I don't know. Um, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm pretty confident that this article nineteen will get through, just, just on sheer emotion.
Ab- absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I want, wanted to point out something about the um. About the moratorium, it's a zoning bylaw. And what we have is um, nine subdivision plans that have been filed. That frees, frees zoning pre, pre the moratorium, so it would not stop all development of, of solar fields in town.
Well, we, we, we know we can't, the horse is out of the, out of the barn, we know we can't stop the nine that are possibly stopped, nine that have already gotten freezing. But. This would put a stop to more coming in. Until we get. You know, if we need to do more work on, on the work that the, the solar committee did or not. At least it would give us an opportunity to um, to put a halt, I mean, I like the idea of the moratorium, but I don't want it uh. To undermine the work that the solar committee did at the same time. So, you know. I guess the question is, is, is this before us for endorsement by the, as a board?
You have to file a report with town meeting as to what your findings are regarding the, the zoning bylaw. So the town meeting has a report from the Planning Board as to when they, before they take a vote.
Before we take a vote?
Before they take, before town meeting takes a vote.
Okay, so again, it's before us tonight for me to stand up at town meeting and say. Uh, on April eleventh, the Planning Board discussed publicly article nineteen. And elected not to support it by whatever the vote is. Or elect to support it by whatever the vote is.
That's correct, and you could add more information to the report as Sherry was uh, suggesting, to show how it conforms to the, the law.
I mean, I would really strongly suggest that for the amended bylaws that um. Appreciate all the work that has gone into them and all this study. The AG is asking for some very particular connections to be made. And I think that the report that this board puts together can help. Uh, to provide the record that the AG can look at uh, to determine whether this uh, passes muster. But you know, again, um, you know, but my view of this is that the um, this is a bit more risky than the moratorium is. You know, I mean, my suggestion would be to, to endorse both. But I can appreciate the emotion, I really, um, I'm sta- said stating this very matter-of-factly and um. Again, I apologize for the years of training that have gone into this. Uh, I, um, it, it pains me to say that in light of all the, the work that has gone in here, but I think if the moratorium passes. It's an opportunity also to let the law develop a little bit more and uh, to uh, maybe uh. Put some fine points on the zoning bylaws, but um, I've said, I've said what I need to say.
Yep, I, 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 I think I would have to agree with Sherry. Um.
Mr. Chairman, could I weigh in here? It's me.
Certainly.
Um, I had a chance to read the proposed bylaw changes. Um, not the moratorium one, but the, the other one that's being discussed. And there's substantially more uh, documentation that would have to be provided by it. Uh, a lot more detail going into a, a significant detail on environment and so forth. Um, it seems to me that the moratorium, while it gives you a little bit of breathing room, at the end of the day. You're gonna be looking down the same barrel of the gun to do something. Um, I think the committee has done a remarkable job for trying to put together something that. I think the committee has done a remarkable job for trying to put together something that it, it has, it has some good merits to it. There was one section of it that I didn't understand it. It had to do with an engineer certifying compliance with a certain state statute. But when I read the requirements of the rest of the bylaw, it appears that they had simply parroted the, the same requirements. So I don't see that as an issue. It's, it's sort of just adding a little bit more language in the bylaw. But passing that, I don't think would do any harm. If you saw some flaws in it, you could still come back and make some adjustments at a later date. And then you won't be under the gun to all of a sudden, at the end of the 12-month period, be stuck with having something to do. Because I think it's been well said, who's going to actually do all of those changes? And from experience I've had in seeing these things over the years, it'll be the 11th month before anybody does anything. And then you're going to be stuck with trying to produce something in a hard and fast fashion that may not be as good as what you've got at the present time. So I guess if I had to make a vote, I would vote to pass the proposed bylaw. Take a chance that we have answered the questions that the Attorney General had with respect to the last one. And just move on because it's not going to help you at all, is what you've said with those nine projects that are out there. And you're just, you know, sort of holding out for another year and then you're going to be back at it again. So that's just my point of view, personal point of view. That's all.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Charlie. I, I guess something's being lost on me, which is if, if we put our weight, if we put our weight behind both articles, don't we get the best of both worlds? We get, we get the new refined zoning bylaws that the committee worked so hard on in place. But we also have a one-year moratorium. So that if by some reason the Attorney General rejects some or all of the, the refinements to five ninety, we've got time to, to fix it. Or am I just misunderstanding?
I think that's a good way to look at it.
So, and, and like I said, I think, and I can talk to the, the, the town moderator to see if it is possible and may or may not be. But if we can put the moratorium up first and let the residents know that we're, you know, we're going to put a buffer between us and the next applicant. And then when we bring five ninety up, we use the fact that we've now, we, we've blocked that buffer. And, and we have, you know, these changes to the bylaw that are going to help us reinforce our control and that the two work in concert. Or do it, or do it opposite. I know, I know the way the townspeople feel, so, and I know this Article nineteen is going to go through without a hitch. It's going to be no issue. Soon as they hear the words, no more solar for a year, they're going to vote for it.
I, I think that the order is likely to be that the amended bylaws will come up first.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chairman, before we, before we do this, you need to vote to open the public hearing, I believe.
Uh, yes, you're right. Is there any other information from the board members before we open the public hearing? Hearing none and seeing none, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for discussion on zoning Article nineteen, spring town meeting warrant, amend town of way in the zoning bylaws for solar energy generation facilities moratorium.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Kyle Schultz, seconded by Jane Gleason with a vote. Carl?
Aye.
Sam Corbett. Sam?
Sorry, had it muted. Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And chair votes aye five zero zero. I'll now open it up to the public. Brenda, you had your hand up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Number one, I would respectfully beg the board not to make a decision on this until even if you have to wait till town meeting. Annie was here. We have, there's been several of us, me, Tricia, a couple of other people who have been texting, trying to get a hold of her. I have someone going over to her house right now because I know she wouldn't want to meet, miss this. So maybe it's just as simple as her phone died or something, but she was here earlier. You had even called on her regarding another thing. So I, I beg of you for that. Secondly, I don't want to call anyone. Well, first of all, Mr. Schultz was absolutely right. This will, I mean, the bylaw will come up first. We do the special town meeting warrants before the annual town meeting warrants. So the discussion of five ninety will come up, will take a vote and will be settled and that special town meeting will be dissolved before this one is even addressed. So, you know, there's no way that this can go in front of the other one. I know that I was at the planning, I mean, at the finance committee when they were discussing the moratorium. And they were of the opinion of they could support both of them for the reasons that were discussed by a couple of the previous speakers. And finally, I don't want to put her on the spot. But I do know that Nancy McHale is in the participants. And she did speak with the, the lead petitioner of the moratorium. And I know that the lead petitioner was working with Claire Smith to make sure that while Claire was going to allow her to amend it on a couple of parts to make sure that it's satisfied. It stayed with the intent of what they wanted. But I think there was like a, something with a, there wasn't a, an expiration date, so they were adding that and stuff like that. If Nancy wants to speak, fine. But again, my final thing is to please don't make a decision on this because it is so unlike Annie not to be here for it. And I, you know, I just hope she's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Tricia?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give a little background that the information that you're hearing here is not from, whether it's from me or Brenda or Nancy or Kathy or Eric Lintala, is not be just emotional feelings. We're fairly educated. There are meetings every week where people involved from towns all over Massachusetts report on what's happening with solar in their area, what they've been successful with, what they haven't been successful with, where the state is going with what's happening with solar. And solar in itself, the, the technologies around it are still brand new. They're changing monthly. We probably see a change every six months, whether it's in the size of the equipment, the strength of the equipment, whatever it is. And so, for example, we could be talking about a 25-acre site now and have the same type of capability coming out of a 10-acre site in, in a year or so. So I go back to what, Sherry, I hope you don't mind if I use your first name. I go back to what Sherry said in between what we learn every week about what is happening. There are changes happening in the law and at the state level and at, with other lawsuits that says if we can hold this for a year, the whole law system may be different. And when I look at solar, it's not just about getting power. It's about how is it implemented, where it impacts people's life? Now, another piece of legislation that's up and running, potential for legislation at the state is protecting environmentally sensitive areas. Pine barrens, cranberry bogs, forests, and that's all important. But the, the thing that happens when we do that is the alternative is then to put this all over people's local living areas. And there are sound issues, there are health issues, there are temperature issues, et cetera. This moratorium, let me please finish my sentence. This moratorium will give not just us, but the state time to figure out more definitively what they're doing, both from the legislative area and from lawsuits and, and cases that are impacted by it. It's moving fast. And the moratorium will help the state to catch up and us to see what the state is doing.
Mr. Chairman, a, a point and a question for Tricia. I believe the moratorium only addresses large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays. Well, your point about solar over houses and solar less than 250, 250 kilowatts are not affected by the moratorium and are as of right in town and will continue to be as of right in town.
And Carl, I understand that. But it's these large sites that they're putting in neighborhoods like Ferring Hill that's still up for grabs. I'm not talking about what can be done in an individual's yard or on top of their house. I'm talking about large solar installations in residential areas.
Thank you for the clarification. I thought you said something about overhouses.
No, I didn't.
And, and I think, Trish, just, just to clarify, I, I can hear the, the emotion in your voice. You, you, you don't have to sell us on the fact that we want to control solar. I, I think we're all of the opinion that that is front and center. It is, is to, to, to put the solar development in this town back under control because it's definitely out of control. We're just trying to figure out how to, at least I, my, my personal opinion is, is try to figure out the best way to present this article and the other article so that they both pass, so that we get the refined zoning bylaw that the, that the solar team worked on in place and then get, get the, the one-year moratorium in place. Now, now we've, now we've got time to breathe. We've got the time to look at this without scrambling around with, you know, which is basically what we've been doing.
Thanks, Mr. King.
Oh, man. Mr. Lintala?
Uh, thank you. It's, it's been a lot of good points made about both of these, the moratorium and the five ninety. And I'm listening to everybody. And what makes most, more, what's, what makes the most sense? And I think what you're talking about, Mr. Chairman, is to, to bring the moratorium, moratorium and the five ninety together somehow, if, you know, that, that will, so that neither one negates each other. It's, it's, I think they're both very important. And if they could be woven together, presented together in a way that makes sense, I think that's, that's the smart way to go. We've all been kind of thrown for a loop a little bit tonight on certain issues that were brought up, the Ferring Hill particularly. You know, the solar bylaw committee, if they have to start all over or any other committee, so be it. The people who've been dealing with the Ferring Hill, we've been dealing with it for more than a year, collecting information. And to think about that it might have to start over, so be it. We're going to continue, you know, our discussions with that. I don't think anybody's going to give up who's been present in all these things for the past year or so. They're not going to give up. But I think what's coming up then for the town meeting, I, I, I don't have all the information, but it sounds common sense to bring the two together. Whatever sounds the right thing to do and what the people are going to want, the residents are going to want. We keep, we bring that up, we talk about it, but at the same time, it's, it's neglected when it comes to like the Ferring Hill episode. So, you know, the residents are the key people. And well, bring those two together. I think that's the smart thing.
I, I, I would have to agree, Eric, and just one point is, as far as the Ferring, Ferring Hill project, and I don't want to head down the rabbit hole because that's not really what we're talking about. But there's, there's been absolutely no, no neglect on, on the town side. We, we've been working our tails off to make sure that no town resident is adversely affected by that project, whether it happens or not. There's, there's been tons and tons and tons of man-hours put into making sure that the residents are protected.
And that's greatly appreciated, greatly appreciated.
Okay, so Nancy, how are you?
I am well tonight. Thank you. I am sorry that Annie is unable to be here at this time. And I'm sure that there is more than a good reason. I know that there was some confusion early on as to how the moratorium and the warrant article were actually written. Part of the issue was that on the handwritten piece that was sent into or submitted to the Board of Selectmen's office, it says to see if the town will vote to enact a temporary moratorium on large-scale ground-mounted full-take systems and large ground-mounted solar system installation as defined as structurally mounted on the ground with a minimum name plate of capacity of greater than 250 KW DC. And that's, that's great. But on the, the backside is actually a typewritten piece that says to see if town meeting will vote to rescind bylaw five, or section five ninety in it and replace it in its entirety with a solar moratorium. And then in that, it also talks about the moratorium having an expiration date. So I know that Annie has been in conversation with Madam Moderator to see how that article should be put before the, the town voters because in the, in the actual warrant, it does say to rescind Article five, section five ninety, but it has no end date in it, although it does say temporary moratorium. So I have not heard back from Annie as to how that is going to play out. But one of the, the strengths of having both the bylaw, the solar committee's bylaw and the moratorium go forward and presumably both be passed by town meeting for two-thirds vote. If the, our solar bylaw that we have put our hearts and soul into for the last nine months, and Carl has been front and center on all of that, if for whatever reason the Attorney General sees that that is not appropriate to pass, you know, her rigorous muster, then there would be the moratorium potentially to fall back on. I don't know, and I can't second guess at this point. I know that the Supreme Judicial Court rulings are going to have widespread implications for every town in this state. There, in the Commonwealth, there is no doubt about that. And it's extremely difficult. None of us have a crystal ball. We all know what we want to have happen. We all want solar where it belongs and to keep it out of where it doesn't belong. How do you get the developers to put it over parking lots and on large buildings? I don't have the answer to that question. I wish that Annie was here. And again, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't make a recommendation as to how do you, how do you folks, how the planning board or any other board should vote on this. I would say go with your gut reaction, vote your conscience. But this article was put forth. But this article was put forth, um, by concerned citizen in all good faith, is all I can say. But I also know.
Thank you, Nancy.
You know, it's the kind of thing, who is going to study it? How are we going to come forward? And whatever we do, we run the risk of a massive line of developers coming in and putting in freeze plans. And that's just the way the state, um, seems to want development every place it can. Anyway, thank you very much. I hope that helped.
The one thing that I noticed, Ken, if you can chime in for me, is, you know, rereading the, the typewritten version of this article. It, it, it requests that, that article five, section five ninety be replaced in its entirely. So is the, is the intent that that line is going to be stricken, uh, on the floor at town meeting? Because that, to me, seems like that undermines all the work that, uh, the solar committee did by, because it's going to strip it out completely.
I think you have to raise that point. Uh, I may, this may take, uh, some town council's, uh, input on this as well.
Well, yeah, I mean, based on reading that, I would have a hard time supporting it, knowing that it's going to, it's going to strip the, the section five ninety out of the bylaws completely and, and leave us vulnerable if this gets overturned, then what happens?
Well, if it's overturned, it, the, um, the five ninety is overturned as, the, the restriction of five ninety is overturned as well.
Okay, but, but then we go back to, um.
The old five ninety.
The old five ninety, which means all the work that was done by the solo committee gets put on a shelf.
The, the other issue, Mr. Chairman, is, um, rescinding just section five ninety. The moratorium on solar, that's fine, but y- yeah, if you don't rescind, uh, the, the lines from the use table, then basically you allow solar in the town without any regulation at all. So, so the, the, the use is dictated in section, uh, article three. How it's regulated is dictated in section five ninety. So if you strip section five ninety without updating article three, then you allow solar wherever, anywhere, everywhere.
Yeah. Okay, uh, in the, in the interest of keeping this meeting moving, I'm going to ask that, Brenda, I saw your hand up, that, that Brenda will be the last person to comment tonight before we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to say that, that top section that is in there that says to rescind five ninety, that was not on what people signed. That was added. I'm sure it was added with Annie's approval, or she would have made sure people knew. But I have the same concerns on that section that Mr. Schultz has. That the moratorium was just the moratorium. And what my understanding was that was going to be added was just, um, a deadline. You know, the one year or, you know, to expire it, whatever. And, um, but again, my last thing is to say, I would, please, I would beg the board not to make a decision just to continue this. And hopefully we'll hear from Annie and, um, she could come and speak to you before town meeting. Um, thank you.
Okay, um, the only, the only pickup that I see with that is, is that our next, our, our next meeting is the day of town meeting.
Well, that's true, but you also have hearings on that night too, so, I mean, you will, you will be making decisions then. Thank you.
Sam?
No, I was just, we're getting into conversations that we shouldn't. We're supposed to have a top, an open meeting with the speaker, applicant or supporter speaks once for their proposal. We're getting into conversations that I don't think we should have. It's not on the agenda. It's an open, it's an open meeting.
Okay, uh, so I would say based on, um, based on all the input tonight and what we've got in front of us, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and then ultimately voters aboard whether to put our support behind article nineteen for town meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Okay, that's not a good sign.
Second.
Thanks, Mike. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing on article nineteen, spring town meeting warrant, amend town of Wayham zoning bylaws for solar energy generation facilities moratorium? And motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, uh, for a vote to, for a vote to support. Uh, Kyle.
Wait, what are we voting on? We have to vote to close the public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. That's, that's what the motion was for. I got ahead of myself. So we have a second, we have a motion by Sam and a second by Mike to close the public hearings, uh, for a vote. Kyle?
Uh, no, I, uh, believe that we should hear from, from the applicant.
Okay, Sam?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, yes.
Jane?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So four, one, zero, to close the public hearing. Now an entertaining motion to take a vote of support for article nineteen, spring town meeting warrant. Do I have a motion to vote yes to support? Or no? We, we could take the seat of the way, right, Ken? Just a, 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 a vote of suppo, a, a vote of support and it would be either a yay or a nay?
You could do it that way. Um, the town meeting looks for a report from you, whatever that might be.
Well, that, what, what's happening tonight will be the report.
Right, that you're a yay or a nay, it's going to be the report to town meeting.
Correct, okay, so, uh, look for a motion to vote yes or no to support article nineteen at spring town meeting warrant. Do we have a motion?
Okay, okay, so we're going to vote up, thumb up or thumbs down?
Correct.
I, I, I'll excel, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to take a vote by Kyle Schultz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sam Corbett. This will be a vote of yes to support or no, not to support. Carl?
Uh, I'm going to vote no based on the reasoning, uh, that I think they're in conflict and will cause confusion, uh, uh, for the voters.
Okay, Sam?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Jane?
I'm struggling with what the wording is going to be in the actual warrant, whether it's going to be as handwritten or as typed.
Town moderator will want it to be typed, so it's going to be printed up on the screen.
So it's the type, it's the type written version?
Is it going to be as the, as the handwritten version that people signed? Or is it going to be as, as the, the second page, the typed part? So I'm struggling with it.
I don't know. All you have right now is what the, um, um, the selectman issued, which was the, uh, original, which was the signed version.
Then I will, yes.
Yes, Jane. I, so, Ken, the absolutely, it's going to be the signed version, right? It's not going to be the typed version that says to rescind article five, section five ninety.
Well, I don't know. Uh, that, my indication I was getting was that there was a modification that was going to be submitted.
But the, the handwritten version does not have.
Right, doesn't have the rescinding.
Does not have the clause in there that rescinds.
Right.
It, it doesn't have an end date either, and which is problematic for a moratorium.
I'm less troubled with that than the.
The AG want to approve a, a moratorium without an end date on it.
Exactly. So, we're not really getting an answer here. Which one, which version of these are we actually going to be presented with on the town floor?
I don't know. What you've been presented with from the selectman is the one that was, that was handwritten. That had the, the signatures on the petition.
Well, we know that one's going to get overturned, so there's no sense in putting weight behind it.
Unless it gets amended on the floor and a date put on it.
But, yeah, but we don't have the petition here to, 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 to speak to that.
Right, and I find that less troubling than the, the, um, rescinding of, uh, section five ninety.
Yeah, the rescinding, i- i- if in fact, I mean, Ken can't give us a definitive answer, which one of these we're going to see on the floor, and we don't have the applicant here to tell us which one she plans on presenting.
Yeah, I understood that we were going to be seeing on the floor of town meeting, the one that was handwritten. And the problem with that is that there's no, no, uh, sunset date. And so that's something that I find less troublesome to add that on to, on town meeting floor than deleting the rescinding of five ninety on town meeting floor.
Well, what you can do is report to town meeting what you, what your, your thoughts are, that you don't want to have five ninety rescinded. You want a dead, a deadline of a year on the moratorium and, um, that the moratorium then is okay.
And that doesn't. That, that doesn't, uh, dramatically change the intent of the moratorium by putting, uh, the one year in there. I know you can, you could change, yeah, I say, I know you could change it down, but not, not up.
I, I believe that they're going to be allowed to amend on the floor and, and put a year limitation in it.
Okay.
That's a gamble.
It, it, yeah, it is, that's.
It's a big gamble. Well, what you want to do is say what you want out of the bylaw. What you, what you want to do is say what you wanted out of the bylaw, and in which case you wanted to have five ninety stay in place and that the moratorium have a, a deadline of a year.
Okay, the other thing that bothers me is this, this handwritten petition that was received by the Board of Selectmen. It hasn't been signed by the petitioner.
It was signed by petitioner, it was signed by petitioners on that, uh, in that, uh, what was filed with the town clerk.
I understand that, but it says below, it certified that X of the above signatures check and thus the names qualify for voters in the town of Wayham and signed for.
Exactly.
And that wasn't filled out. I think.
Uh, you guys.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard? May I be heard?
This is point of order, Michael, Chair.
Yeah, we closed.
We're discussing, we're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we closed the public hearing anyway, so that, that, that there can't be any more comment.
No, Michael, I mean our comments. There's a motion on the floor.
Oh, yes, yeah, you're right, I'm, I'm stalling my vote because I, I don't like either of these versions for various reasons. But I think at the end of the day, if, if the printed one is, is presented, it creates a huge problem with section five ninety. If the handwritten, handwritten one is presented, it hasn't been signed and, and it needs to be modified. And imposing a one-year limit on it might be considered a, a, a major modification by the AG. So I think I'm, for my vote, I'm going to have to, um, I'm going to have to agree with Kyle and, uh, Sam, and I'm, I'm going to vote no. So that would be three, three, two, three, two, zero, two, nine.
Two. Oh.
I'm sorry?
I was going to say it was two, three, zero, if you're just doing up and down. Two, four, three, against.
Yep, two, four, three, against, zero abstained, not to, uh, recommend at town meeting article nineteen, uh, on the town warrant. Moving forward, public hearings on zoning articles, article twenty-six, spring town meeting warrant, amend town of Wayham zoning bylaws for affordable housing under the local initiative program. I read this three times. I still don't understand it. Is there anybody that would like to, from the board that would like to speak to this?
When the board, are we opening a public hearing?
We need to eventually, yes.
Okay.
The, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for article twenty, discussion on article twenty-six, spring town meeting warrant, amend town of Wayham zoning bylaws for affordable housing under the local initiative program. Do we have such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Kyle, seconded by Sam for a vote. Kyle?
Uh, I'd open the public meeting.
And Sam?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
And chair votes yes, five, zero, zero. Okay. Now, with the public meeting open, is there anybody on the board that would like to speak to article twenty-six?
Mr. Chairman, uh, only a couple of notes. Uh, first of all, this, um, is a response, um, to the AG's letter. This, this amendment or an amendment that this is related to was passed, uh, at last, at the, uh, last spring town meeting on June twelfth. The AG's letter and Ken, Ken and the applicant, I think Brenda's on the line, will be able to better explain. The AG, uh, provided feedback that said that she found the bylaw, uh, acceptable by law, but felt that there were, uh, troubling points, uh, with its ability to be implemented with DHCD. And I believe that, uh, Ms. Ekstrom, who was the proponent last year, has, uh, made changes and attempted to address those concerns. I know that the Wareham, uh, Affordable Housing Trust is, uh, in favor of this because it gives us a mechanism for adding, uh, affordable housing to the inventory. Which, uh, is, is a, uh, a goal, a worthy goal that I support. My, my, uh, trouble with this remains to be how we administer and implement it and track it. Uh, and perhaps Ms. Ekstrom will speak to that. I, I think that also that Mr. Buckland probably can explain the issues more clearly than I.
Ken?
Do you want me to speak to the article?
Yep, please.
This, as Carl said, the Attorney General rejected the first version of the bylaw. By not by rejecting the legality of it, but the content that suggested that there was difficulty in the process, and some of the terms of the bylaw. So Ms. Ekstrom went back and worked on it again, and produced what she thinks addresses the concerns of the Attorney General regarding the process and mechanism for getting the units on the subsidized housing inventory, because that's what the intent is here. It provides an opportunity for residents in town who have, or would like to have an accessory apartment unit or other housing unit on their adjacent, their older lots, that aren't, no longer conform to zoning, and produce, under the local initiative program, units that would be subsidized and qualify under DHCD for affordable housing units. And so, become eligible for the subsidized housing inventory, which is that 10% goal that every town is up against to produce for affordable housing in their communities.
So this is just a tightened-up version of last year's?
Right. I think, I don't agree with all the content of it, that it actually works, since with the zoning bylaw, unlike a program that has flexibility in the rules and regulations, this is a zoning bylaw that is specific to the wording of the bylaw itself. And I don't think all the wording works to the end that we're trying to accomplish there.
But you said that the original one was rejected by the AG, so right now, we don't have one that's effective or approved?
It was approved by the Attorney General. The Attorney General found it to be legal under the state law, but had a lengthy discussion on the content of it and the problems associated with the way it was written.
Is there any other board members that would like to weigh in on this? I'm looking for Brenda, I don't see, is Brenda not with anyone?
I'm right here.
Oh, there you are. Okay, if you could fill us in a little bit on the changes that were made and why?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to clarify a couple of things. The Attorney General, I will read her conclusion. Because we find no conflict between Article 26, which coincidentally was the article that, you know, from June, and the Constitution or the laws of the Commonwealth, we approve Article 26. However, we suggest that the town discuss the application of the bylaw with Town Council and DHCD to ensure it is applied consistent with the state's affordable housing laws. It doesn't say it was rejected. This is a current bylaw for the town of Wayham, or the one that was approved in June. We have that bylaw. What this is, is I requested from the selectmen to work with Town Council, I was denied. So I went on my own. I went to Mr. Buckland, who I told him I had been working with DHCD, and he had informed me that he did not believe Raiko Hayashari, is that it? No, Hi, I'm going to get the name wrong. But that the Director of DHCD, he did not believe that she was qualified to determine the bylaws. So I...
We just lost you.
Brenda, if you can hear us, we can't hear you.
Yep, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened there. Well, I do know, I pressed the button. So I spoke with the Director, Ms. Hayashi. Well, I sent it to Attorney Rubin, who is the Chief Counsel for DHCD. She sent it to Ms. Hayashi. And we went back and forth several times. I have the emails to show every area where she had, you know, a question on it. And what I did, everything that's in there, everything emboldened in the modification, is just to show what we're going to, how it's going to be counted, to ensure that anything that is built under that bylaw will be counted on the SHI. So this is just to, so there isn't any confusion. And, you know, in reality, this, I hate to say, this really didn't need to be done, because the selectmen are the ones that approved these, it's a local initiative, they approved them. If it didn't meet the SHI, they would just reject it. But this is so that there isn't any question, that there's a better guideline, and that anyone reading the bylaw understands that these are the amounts they can charge, the percentages, and everything. So anything that's created will count towards the town's affordable housing. So this is just to clean that up. And like I said, I have DHCD, the Director of DHCD, who worked with me on it. And if anyone has any questions about it, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
So just for clarification, the bolded text is updated?
The bolded is the added pieces.
So those are new?
Yes. And if you look, it's, most of it is either to identify the size of a, like 700 square feet for a one-bedroom or whatever. And then the other one is pretty much saying 70% for someone making 80% or less. I think that's in there a couple of times.
So can you clarify for me? The, it's saying the property shall be sold at a price not to exceed 70% of the area median income for a credit-worthy buyer. Is that intentional, that you can only charge 70% of what the area...
Of the market rate, of the market rate. 70%.
It says 70% of the area median income. AMI, right?
Yes, yes, 70%, someone earning, someone earning 80%. I'm sorry, let me...
So if you put 833.72?
Thank you. Get my paperwork here.
I know it's a little bit of alphabet soup, and I just want us to get caught up in something saying that, something that was not intended.
No, what it is, is that the price is not to exceed, this was at a price sold, not to exceed 70% of the AMI for a credit-worthy buyer.
I think you got your acronyms out of sort.
That's what I'm thinking, but that AMI is not what you intended.
Yeah, I know, SHI, SHI.
Yeah, that AMI should be changed as well.
Yes, and it's right, and I was going to say, the rentals not exceed...
Yeah.
Yep. Gee, I was going to say, and we went through this, thank you. I may have to amend that on the floor, if the town moderator will allow me. Yeah, thank you. See if I have it on the other one, I hope I only did it on the one.
That was the one that I'll take back.
You know, I was going to say, I will, I will go back, I was going to say, I did get, we did go back and forth. So I very well, let me see, defined.
I did have one other question.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, now I'm...
Sorry.
No, that's, listen, I would rather have it found out now.
In paragraph 833.71?
Yes.
You're muted, Jane.
Oh, you're muted now.
Cat on the keyboard, sorry. The current owner may choose to sell the newly-recognized lot for a price not to exceed 10% of the sale price of an affordable three-bedroom home as determined by the DHCD. So... The price of the lot is based on an affordable three-bedroom home price, is that what you're saying there?
It's, yeah, 10% of it. And the reason why that I did that was just because if you're going to cap, if someone builds a two- or three-bedroom home, and they can only get $221,000 to $257,000 for it, because it has to be affordable, and that's what the limits currently right now are for a house. That if you allowed someone to subdivide their property and sell that for as much as, you know, for, let them do anything they wanted, I would be concerned that either a developer may do a lower-quality job on the house, because they've spent too much on the property. And if someone doesn't like it, then they don't have to subdivide their house. This is all an option for people. I looked at it, that if it was, I looked at it in a way of a senior citizen on a fixed income, if they can sell it for $25,000, that could be, you know, in a Swift Beach area, Indian Heights area, you know, that could be almost 10 years' worth of taxes for them that they could be paid for, and they wouldn't have to worry about their side yard mowing it or whatever.
Yeah.
So...
I clarifies it for you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this?
Could I ask a couple of questions, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Just generally speaking, what areas of town would be affected by this bylaw?
Any area that, it's not necessarily to a zone, because, for example, if you go into, like I said, like the Swift Beach area, down near, and you know this, Charlie, down towards Swift Beach, the lots, you know, 5,000 square foot lots, or even smaller, but state law is 5,000.
Right.
If you move further up, when the town was designed, I know further up Swift Beach Road, they were initially 7,500 square foot lots. Now it's 30,000 to build down there. So right now, if you have, say you live up Swift Beach Road, and you have two lots. One is 7,500, your house is on it, everything. And then beside you, you have, you know, the trees and stuff that you initially bought with it, or that someone bought with it, and it ended up getting merged in common ownership. That piece there, you could sell that off. But it has to go to what the plan was. So I'm sure we'll be looking up some old Rowley plans for it, to find out when they were designed. That, you know, so that they couldn't divide it into a 5,000-square-foot lot, because the lot was 7,500. So that's what they would have to honor. So they're not, they're not putting any deeper infill than what most of the neighborhood is anyway.
So basically, this would really affect places like Swift Beach, Swift Neck, Hamilton Beach, Pinehurst, perhaps possibly Weonix Shores, Indian Mountain Beach, Indian Heights, Buzzards Bay Heights, that type of area, where most of the lots, when they were originally divided, were less than 10,000 square feet, right?
Yeah, but it would...
Or places like, like White Island Shores, where the lots were originally 25 feet wide by 100 feet deep. People lot bought three or four of them, put them together. But originally divided, they were less than, say, 10,000 square feet, essentially.
Yes, but as you know, Mass. General Law 48, the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet with 50 foot of frontage.
I understand that, but what I'm leading to is this. I'm very much in favor of doing something like this, because Wayham is not the only town that is struggling with this. Many towns are, because of the way that zoning has evolved over the years, and the prices of lots have got to the point where either retirees, people of low income, or young families that are looking for a starter home, something that they would like to be able to live in and then move to something else, they're stymied because of the cost of construction and the cost of the lot. So I applaud the idea. What I'm wondering is, though, and perhaps you can answer this, or maybe someone else can, if a division takes place in an area that is within a subject, an area that's subject to the FEMA regulations or within a flood zone, that's going to affect how the construction is done, the cost of the construction. And presumably, if a bank is involved in a mortgage, that means you're probably going to be looking at flood insurance. So how do those things impact the potential for people being able to do that, who are starting out on limited income? And what does that do to the communities where the density is already significant by increasing the density even more, where the potential for damage is great? Especially like Lake Swift Beach, or Pinehurst Beach, or some of these other areas. I would love to see it happen in places where you could get people out of the flood zone, where you wouldn't have to worry about that. So those are just questions that I have, I don't know how that gets addressed.
No, well, I can answer that. As far as the flood zones, all regular zoning requirements or conservation requirements, they have to be adhered to, and all Board of Health requirements. So you can't go into it and say, oh, I want to subdivide, and the property that you're subdividing is, you know, at the, you know, mean low-tide line or something, you know? It's, if they do it, they would have to stay up to 15 feet, you know, or, you know, stay up the velocity and all of that. And if it doesn't work, if those cannot be satisfied, then they can't do it. As far as, and I understand the overcrowding, but I also look at that, we have one house, it's lovely, they're lovely people, it's a lovely house, but the house was initially a tiny cottage. And what they did is they put on essentially, I don't want to say McMansion, because... um, I don't wanna say McMansion because that's a negative term usually, but a beautiful house, and the, the new house just became like their entryway. They did that, this is before this zoning thing, because those type of things you can do, you can add on, um, especially in a lot of those areas, eh, um, with the setbacks, I think, you know, the side setbacks are ten feet, the front's twenty feet, the back's ten feet. There are some houses that have pretty much built all of that stuff and used pre-existing non-conforming just to justify it. What this does is, um, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, increase that at all. It's the same, it would be the same, um, whether I put on a huge addition or whether I put on an in-law apartment. Um, so, or a garage, you know, I mean, sometimes, you know, when you have a larger piece of property in, in the five thousand square foot neighborhoods, uh, you know, you can put up a big garage and that takes the light away from the neighbors, you know, the sunshine away from the neighbors, so this would be no less or no more impactful than what people can do on their own property right now. It's just providing places for people to live. And if I may also remind you, this is already a bylaw. This was approved last year, um, by town meeting on January twelfth, and it was approved at the Attorney General's office on, um, December twenty-third. So this is a town bylaw, I'm just trying to clean it up so that there isn't any question or there isn't any issues of, somebody says, well, you don't have that it, you know, um, that it has to count, even though it does, but, um, just so there isn't any questions on it.
Okay, okay, right, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie. Um, okay, so, so just, just to clarify then, this, all this is, is tightening up the existing bylaw based on the comments from the A G.
Correct, and with the approval of D H C D. And Jane, I'm gonna send a, an email to, um, Ms. Hayashi to, to make sure that, if I don't have the, the letters correct, but we had gone over it, so I must, um, I will make sure that those are right, that AMI and SHI, I didn't confuse them anywhere, and I will have them confirm it before, and I'll get some letter of confirmation before town meeting to make sure we have it right. Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there anybody else that would speak to this before we close the public hearing? Hearing none and seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on Article twenty-six of Men Town of Wareham zoning bylaws for affordable housing under the local initiative program.
I'm moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Jane Gleason, uh, for a vote, Carl?
I abstain.
Carl abstains, Sam Corbett.
Yeah.
Mike Baptiste.
Yes.
Jane Gleason?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, four zero one, to close the public hearing. Um, now for a vote of approval.
Mike, Mike, I screwed up, I, I forgot we were voting on closing the public hearing, I, I'm in favor of closing the public hearing.
Well, it's time to figure out why you were abstaining from that.
I, I got ahead of myself.
Had me confused, Carl.
So correct.
You're doing all right, Carl.
Five zero zero. Um, with the vote of five zero zero to close the public hearing, uh, now entertain a motion for a yes or no vote to either, uh, accept or, um, to, uh, support or no support of this article at the Springtown meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Jane Gleason. Again, this is a yes or no vote for support. Uh, Carl?
I'm gonna, this is what I wanted to abstain from.
Okay. And Sam?
No.
Mike?
No.
Jane?
Yes.
Jane's a yes. The chair is a no, so that would be a one, one three zero, not to support.
One, three, one.
I always get that screwed up. One, three, one, not to support. Okay, moving forward.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continued public hearings. Under item number three, hearing impossible vote, thirty-three dash twenty-one site plan review, Wareham P V, I L C zero row twenty-five, mat one fifteen, lot one thousand, ground mounted solar agitation facility. Do we have someone here to support this?
Yes.
Incredibly patient and forbearing.
Hmm, I know I screwed up the agenda list quite severely tonight, I apologize.
No apology necessary. Um, good evening, Betsy Mason for Long Road Energy, um, here with Haley Orbidaw, Director of Development for Long Road Energy, and Sarah Eba from V H B, uh, who is, uh, site engineer consultant. I'll be brief, uh, since the hour is late, um, the last time before you discussed, uh, discussed a number of things, but the primary, uh, mission we came away with after that meeting was to consider this board's request that Long Road take a look at, how we might incorporate fifty foot setbacks into our site plan. Uh, so without waving any of the legal arguments that I won't, uh, drone through again here, but they're, they're in our, our filings, and I've played them out previously, um, we're here tonight to, um, offer our proposal to address the board's request that we, uh, consider fifty foot setbacks. Um, and so, so you are aware, and perhaps you already are, uh, but I spoke briefly with Mr. Buckland, I believe on Thursday, uh, about, um, what, what the board might be receptive to, uh, and, and outlined very roughly, um, what, what we're gonna put before you right now, and he suggested that I, that we come before you tonight as a, you know, as the full board to, to take a look and, um, offer questions that we hopefully can answer. Um, so that said, um, Sarah Eba from V H B will, uh, probably best if she could share her screen to, so you can see what we're, we're talking about, and, um, and walk, thank you, Sarah, walk, walk the board through the, the proposed changes. And I'll just say briefly, uh, that, you know, as we previously discussed, um, and as one board member noted, um, this is a, this is a a pretty good location as locations go for a solar facility because we are, um, off the road, in the woods up to a point, uh, buffered by, uh, other land and topographical elements and, um, just given, given the unique shape of the site, um, we think that this, uh, well, I'll be quiet and let Sarah walk you through it, and then we can answer all your questions.
Think that, thanks, Betsy. Hi, everyone, Sarah Eba from V H B. Um, as Betsy noted, again, there are just some physical as well as environmental constraints with this site, um, with the shape that it is and its previous use. So, on the screen here is just a figure noting the existing vegetated buffer, um, as well as where we are proposing some additional trees and plantings, which is highlighted here in the darker green. Anywhere where we're proposing, uh, vegetated buffer where we're going to manage the existing vegetation to remain uh, is hatched in this solid lighter green. And then just for, uh, some context of the surrounding site, we have, it's a little hard to see on this graphic, I apologize, a darker green hatch just for the exist, existing vegetation that's offsite. So I know, uh, the major area that we were talking about is this area south of the access road where it is, uh, the existing woodland. So, again, here in the, the different hatches of green is where we are proposing that vegetated buffer. Along the southmost property line here, along Route twenty-five, uh, we do have a ten foot vegetated buffer. Um, again, managing the existing vegetation as we've sort of previously discussed with some other projects. The sunlight from the south is obviously one of the, the more important, um, areas for the panels, so keeping that, shade buffer to a minimum for the panels in this area. And again, just wanna highlight that there's about fifty-five to seventy feet of an existing vegetated buffer from Route twenty-five here. Um, if we just keep going along the property, this, um, edge here along the town of Wareham land, we are proposing again a ten foot vegetated buffer as well. I know there was some concern with the property lines abutting the town of Wareham's building here. So on the property line, which abuts the lot to the south, um, again, proposing a fifty foot vegetated buffer as requested, um, and managing the existing vegetation that is there. To the east of the lot, um, again, there is an existing vegetated buffer in many areas of about fifteen to sixty feet, which border our lot, you can see in this dark green cloud here, we are proposing an additional thirty foot vegetated buffer, as the board has requested, so it's staggered rows of new trees, um, providing some additional screening to this lot here. The remaining, uh, property line on the east of the site here, um, again, existing vegetation, we are proposing at least ten foot minimum here in this section that abuts where the panels are located. This vegetated buffer ranges to about, I believe, a hundred and thirty feet at the, um, widest. And again, that's due to just keeping outside of the one hundred foot buffer zone with the limit of clearing. To sort of switch to the north side of the parcel, um, again, this existing vegetation in green is proposed to remain, it ranges from about thirty to sixty-five feet. Uh, and this is part of the parcel that abuts the, uh, existing cranberry bogs as well as some of the vegetated land on the town of Wareham property. On this eastern parcel, there is an existing fifteen foot vegetated buffer. Again, this is the side of the property line that strictly only abuts the cranberry bogs, so we are proposing that to remain um, and have some additional screening with the fence line along this property line. Uh, this western property line, again, north of the access road, is really the trickiest part of the site, I'd say. Um, there are existing steep slopes, it's about one to one slopes, one and a half to one, um, which really don't facilitate any tree, new tree plantings, um, without some major earthwork on site. I know that was a question at our last hearing, um, a question regarding how much earthwork, any additional fill or any export. We are not proposing that at all, we do really want to avoid having to do any major earthwork on this site. There are additional shrubs on the slope that we are proposing to maintain. Um, additionally, on this side of the site, that's noted on the application in the stormwater report, we are proposing to plant a meadow mix, um, both underneath and surrounding the panels to improve this ground cover. That seed mix is also, um, able to grow on the steeper slopes that we're proposing here. Um, and again, this figure just highlights the existing vegetated buffer from Charge Pond Road that we have. It ranges from about one hundred feet to four hundred and eighty feet. So that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Mr. Chair, through you, through you to the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, could you re-explain the, uh, four hundred and eighty foot vegetative buffer on Charge Pond Road? That's not on your property, right?
Correct, uh, just highlighting the existing buffer that's there today from any roadways or adjacent properties.
No, but, but you can't control that buffer, that.
That's correct.
That's really.
Understood, yep, uh, yes, the, the intent of that is solely to call out what's, what's surrounding the property.
Okay, thank you, yeah, you know, we're, our focus should be only on what's under your control. So thank you on that. Are you done with your presentation, or should I wait for more?
I believe we are done, you have it.
Okay, so, so I, I should ask questions at, at this point. So, um, uh, along Route twenty-five, and I don't have the exact, uh, Mr. Rowley raised the, um, the existence of a, um, a variance, I believe, on the other property, uh, did you address that, uh, additional setback that he had mentioned?
We did, uh, and let me back up by explaining what that was, and with all due respect to Mr. Rowley, um, that, the, it was a special permit and site plan approval granted to one of the Blue Wave projects to the east of this site, uh, in, uh, twenty eighteen. And, um, I don't have before me exactly how Mr. Rowley described the setback, but, um, the special permit, which at that point was granted by the Z B A, um, I guess it was before, um, at some point during the solar bylaws iterations, um, he, here, here are the two conditions, so, so you'll hear they're not quite what, uh, Mr. Rowley described, uh, the first, no clearing of vegetation between the proposed fence line and the northerly side of Route twenty-five shall be done until an inspection is made of vegetation to be removed by the proponent and the Board of Appeals and/or its representatives. Trees fifty feet or more in height shall be marked for removal prior to the inspection. Additional vegetation may be removed that clearly cast a shadow in the area of the proposed array. Uh, remaining vegetation that for time casts a shadow on the proposed Route twenty-five B array, that being the Blue Wave one, um, may be removed but not before informing the Board of Appeals, uh, of the date that such removal is proposed. That's it, um, there, about a fifty-five, or I'm sorry, rather, a fifty foot buffer from the edge of the highway, the state highway, uh, access, state highway layout. It is merely that, uh, to the extent vegetation is cleared between the fence line and that, uh, you know, the, the edge of the highway, uh, the edge of, of D O T property, that there be an inspection, uh, before, uh, before any trees are removed, and that, that, um, trees that are fifty feet or higher, or taller, rather, which are intended to be removed, just need to be, you know, marked before, before the inspection so people can see what the deal is.
So, thank you for that clarification, I think, uh, the, the point, as I took it away was, if that was the condition for the property next to you, would you be willing to accept those conditions on your property? I think that was how I understood the question.
Okay, I, I had understood it differently, I think we, we took, uh, what Mr. Rowley requested was that there be a fifty foot buffer, uh, or a fifty foot setback in addition to the set. Or a 50 foot setback in addition to the setback required under the bylaw or, as the board interprets.
And he may have said that, I was accepting your explanation that there wasn't a requirement for that. But I was also thinking of the spirit of the idea, which was, okay, we've imposed that restriction on your neighboring property. Would you be willing to extend that restriction to this project? That, if that's a new question, that's sort of how I'm posing it.
Okay, I think that's a new question and I'm not sure I can answer that at this point, except to say yes, please, yes, we discussed the sort of general idea of it, so please go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, Betsy, as I understand those conditions on Blue Wave. They seem reasonable to the extent, or I guess as long as folks understand that given that it's fairly unique, obviously, as we can all see, dimensions and profile of this particular parcel, it's quite narrow for most of it. That there's, you know, a lot of shadowing that will happen for, you know, any trees above 40 feet. So I just say that the condition itself leaves, leaves room that, you know, once we do our shadow study along that particular border because of the south facing border. That's, that'll be the greatest potential for shadowing. The result might be the same, it's just something I would point out.
Okay, so you'll continue, we'll continue to discuss that as you as we move forward, hey, my next question was the right of way access we talked about. Discussing with the town, the towns, I believe the towns idea, looking for an alternative right of way, did you pursue that?
We did, we actually, Amy, Sarah and I attended a meeting last Monday with Mr. Buckland. And several other town representatives, I think from the DPW and Ken, perhaps you can tell me exactly, I don't remember exactly who was there, but in addition, Matthew Beaton and Ian Ward for Shurkran attended the meeting and we talked and tried to get a sense of what, what DPW is looking for, we had requested, I want to say we, we long requested some sort of a depiction like, you know, this one you have before you, showing where the DPW director was thinking about where the road might go. And we actually agreed to a second meeting for last Thursday afternoon, which was canceled. And we were, you know, prepared to have that second meeting, which was actually going to be a Zoom call and yeah, so we didn't ask for it to be canceled, we were.
So, so is it fair to say that discussions are ongoing and it's still a possibility?
I would defer to Mr. Buckland on that because I don't know why the meeting was, the second meeting was canceled and what the status of the discussion is.
Let me add to that discussion. It was a meeting with Derek Sullivan, Dave Menard and myself.
Thank you, yes.
The representatives from Shurkran and what's the name of this one, Betsy?
Long Road Energy.
Long Road, yeah.
Yes.
And the best that we could do was a was a road that still cuts through the middle of the larger northern parcel zone by the town. And Dave Menard didn't feel that that provided the kind of benefit for the use of the land that he was looking for. It looks like we're at a stalemate as to that right of way in any significant way that makes a difference about the use of that land and
Okay, so is it fair to say that the, the the issues are not presented by the applicant, they're, they're external to the applicant, is that correct?
That's right, they're external to the applicant, that reason why the applicant is in that discussion was because they have the right of way going through their property as well. And they're one of the, they have rights of access on that, that, that way, along with Shurkran and apparently some others as well.
Let me ask the question a different way, Ken, I brought this up because I thought it was something the town was interested in. Should I not pursue it if the town believes this issue is dead? Dead is the wrong word.
Unless, unless you can get something that allows a greater use of the northern piece of the land and is contiguous with the operations on at the present time there, which I don't think is possible with the, with the, with the the discussion we had previously, then no, there's no reason to continue that, discuss that line of discussion.
Okay, so I'm satisfied that we've pursued this and it didn't work out.
That's right.
I don't think I have any other questions at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that needs to speak to this?
I got a question, Mike.
Yes, sir.
On the northern part of that project, is that all going to be loomed and seeded? I notice you say you're going to put a meadow mix, unless you have something new that grows on sand. And what, how are they going to maintain the slopes, are they going to loom the slopes to seed them for us?
Yes, the intent is to loom and seed it, the specific meadow mix as well has been used in some other solar projects that we've worked on that have had a sandier base as well, so that's where the meadow mix is based off of.
So the whole site's going to be meadow mixed?
Within the limits of clearing on the south side and within the limit of work on the north side, yes.
I'm all set, Michael.
Thank you, sir, is there anybody else?
Are you hoping at the citizen comment at this point?
Well, as soon as I verify that there's nobody else on the board that needs to weigh in.
Thank you.
Charlie, is there anything about this project aside from what we've talked about that concerns you?
Well, just maybe a little clarification on what's taking place along Route 25.
Right.
They you can't really frame the buffer that's within the straight layout, so any of the trees that are there are strictly under state control, they can clear everything off that they want right up to their the layout line, which is basically the the green line that you see on the plan on the extreme left of the line, where that heavy green portion is right there, that's the limit of the layout. So they can clear right up to that. What we did for Blue Wave was say that from that point, there had to be a 50 foot buffer. That they had the approval based on some actual planning that they did, they went out and they measured the tree height. They also measured the angle of the sun and they determined that the trees that were over I think it was 40 feet, I know it was mentioned 50, but I think the maximum height that they could the minimum height that they could take was down to 40 feet, after that it had to be left. And that the initial trees that were taken out of that, they were marked. Members of the ZBA and myself went out there along with the applicant and the engineer or the site contractor. And we verified the trees had been marked that could be taken out. It was also a stipulation, and I don't recall whether it's in the body of the special permit or not, that they would not be cut by yanking them out, including the stumps. That they would be cut because they were using equipment that would simply snip the tree off, basically at ground level and leave the stump in place. That's important, especially to the vegetation involved with oak trees and maple trees because they will regenerate on a stump. But if you pull a stump out, that tree's gone. A white pine does not regenerate, pitch pine will. So the intent there was to allow them to remove any trees that would basically shadow the panels that were in that area, but anything under 40 feet, they were supposed to leave. Except in those cases where there was a general consensus from the board that something should be taken out. But that none of the understory vegetation was to be disturbed. That, if you go by there now, before the leaves come out, you'll see that there's still a reasonable buffer between the layout line and where those panels begin on that south side. So it only seems to be consistent to expect that the same thing would be done here because the the topography is not that much different. As a matter of fact, it may be even a little flatter in this location than it is on some portions of the Blue Wave piece. So I'd have concerns about that, and the only other thing that I would say about the 50 foot buffer is that in other places, I'll take off of Charlotte Furnace Road, for example, off of Tyhonet Road. The minimum 50 foot buffer strip has been honored. In some cases, certain applicants have gone well beyond that. But to suggest that there is some sort of a buffer on the Wesley side of this piece that's from 180 feet to 400 feet deep just is not the case. Because as Mr. Schultz has suggested, the applicant doesn't control it. There is one further thing that I just pointed out on the plan, just for general information to the benefit of the board and the applicant, that along Charge Pond Road there's a, what appears to be a rather open strip that's just to the well, let's call it the bottom of the pavement of Charge Pond Road, if you see that. That is, that is land that was cleared by the town probably oh, it was over 50 years ago anyway, and they used it as a place to mix oil and sand together to make what they call mix-in-place pavement, and that's what they used in the town streets. And they would wind row it back and forth, back and forth with a grader. And then they would pick it up in trucks and then they'd place it wherever they were going to repave a town street. But the layout line extends closer toward the pavement of Charge Pond Road, so the lines that are shown there really aren't a true location of where the boundary is. The boundary is further toward Charge Pond Road than what you're showing.
Understood.
Excuse me, go ahead.
To the chair, if I may respond to a couple of the comments there. With regard to other solar developers' facilities in town. I guess I can't speak to those and whether or not they had 50 foot or, or wider, bigger setbacks and buffers. My, my general knowledge of those projects is that they are bigger projects. But that said, I guess I would ask the board to take into account here what Ms. or Adele mentioned earlier, and that is, this is a pretty uniquely shaped property. It's sort of apples and oranges to compare it to, at least as, it's kind of apples and oranges to compare to the to the Blue Wave project that we're talking about that has that buffer. Because I mean, that is just a pretty, I don't think it's a perfect square by any means, but it certainly doesn't look like a golf club or a feel like a stick or a musical note, however you want to describe this. We're trying to work with a parcel that is oddly shaped at best and so I guess we would ask for not necessarily leeway there, but some consideration of the fact that that that's what we're working with. Secondly, with regard to the concern for shielding, passing cars on Route 25 from having to see the solar array, first, we are proposing to manage the existing vegetation so that there's at least a 10 foot vegetated buffer there, which is not nothing. But secondly, if you look across Route 25 on the other side of Route 25, there is a giant junkyard full of cars and there is no screening there at all. And granted, that may be a, you know, prior, pre-existing non-conforming use. I haven't looked into the history of that parcel, but I mean, if I were driving by, granted perhaps I'm biased, but would I rather see a sprawling junkyard full of rusting cars that really is appears to be much bigger than the, that southern area of panels? Or would I like to see, you know, sort of straining through 10 feet of trees? Yes, there you go. It just, you know, it's, it's, it's in time.
I would have to respectfully disagree on two of those points. A, you can't see that junkyard from Route 25. Google Earth may show it to be real close to the road, but I drive that road nearly every day and that junkyard is not visible. And B, even if it was visible, just because one parcel gives you a view of something unpleasant, doesn't mean that a second parcel should.
I fully understand that.
My main concern, my main concern is that the residents of this town don't have to look at it. That's, it, I can't make it any clearer than that. So looking at Google Earth and looking at the other solar field and then looking at your map, your buffer between the array and Route 25 is considerably narrower than the buffer that they're abiding by. Why can't you just maintain that same buffer? It's only on one, it's only on one boundary of a, granted oddly shaped, but very large array. So that the people that are traveling in town or traveling to the Cape or whatever the case might be, don't have to look at it. It's, you know.
Yeah, it's just, you know, unfortunately arguably our most valuable boundary line because of the southern, I understand, yeah, I think we took away from last meeting that you guys were most focused on the municipal, you know, buffer, and so that's what we had focused on, but you know, understood, I think, you know, kudos to Blue Wave, they got a nicely formed parcel and and I don't know how big that project was, but it looks like they probably got five megawatts and you know, here, you know, again, we're, we're probably given that we took some panels away from the last iteration to do the 50 foot on the northern border with the municipal buildings. You know, we're probably going to be maybe at three megawatts total, so we're not trying to be greedy, we're just trying to make, still have a project that works.
Yep, no, it's understood, I mean, it has to be financially viable to make sense for you. But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be at the cost of the residents of the town that I mean, we already have, we already have more than our fair share of solar arrays in town, sort of we're just trying to protect the people that live here, you know.
Yeah, no, understood, I mean, yeah, I think the whole way that this parcel was identified in the first place was trying to find something that was in you know, largely municipal commercial use area so that we weren't going to be, you know, in front of anybody's residential house, so.
No, that part I agree with 100%, I mean, citing is, you know, proposed to perfect as far as being away from residential areas. But, you know, that being said, you know, having, having guests and residents driving down that road. They just shouldn't have to look at the array, there's just no reason for it when we're talking you know, I think you're at what, 20 feet or 25 feet? For that buffer along Route 25?
Honestly, we're proposing a 10 foot buffer along Route 25.
Well, but the panels will be set back, you know, what, the road is what, Sarah?
That's true, good point, the road is at least 20.
The panels will be back about 50 feet from the property line on this side.
You know, the reality of it is, is 10 feet of trees and undergrowth are not going to hide those panels. It just isn't going to happen.
Right, but then we still got another 30 feet, I'm just trying to think about. Think about. Yeah, it's just.
Uh, one other thing. It it just, I mean, completely, I am willing to be shot down from any direction on this one, but. Um, and I and I I say this without having any idea of what the engineers would. Would say about it in terms of what it would do to the project, so perhaps I shouldn't say it at all, but. Um, as Helen ended, we were, we came away from the last meeting. Um. Understanding that the municipal maintenance facility, I have potential visual impacts on the municipal maintenance facility were really. Your primary concern and that the Route twenty five concern was was also there, but really we were trying to. Um, you know, shield uh, the DPW from having to view the panels.
But well, honestly, I think I I I think you only caught part of the message because. If I had my druthers between the residents and visitors driving down the highway and looking at it and having the highway bond look at it. The highway bond would be looking at it.
And and that's actually. Great minds think alike, that's kind of where I'm headed here, what if we flipped them so that there was at least a ten foot? Say uh, buffer. Um. On the, on the DPW barn side and the fifty foot buffer on the Route twenty five side. Again, I'm not an engineer. Um, I don't know how this would work.
They're like twenty five and twenty five.
Yeah, it's something, something like that, I mean, and and again, being, I I I'm aware that there's a, you know, that's the southern. Uh, you know, southern facing view, however you want to put it, so that there is a a shading concern there, but. I mean. Can this board act uh, in a, you know, as King Solomon and and uh, can we split it up in a way that would be? Um. You know, better all the way around, I guess.
Well, that would be my decision to to make, obviously, the other.
Yes, no, no, I'm just. If we were to come back before this board with a proposal that either flipped it around or. Um. Made adjustments in the field, as it were. Um, so that the DPW folks don't have to look directly at the panels without any vegetated buffer there, but that they don't get a full fifty feet. And provide fifty feet on the Route twenty five side. Um.
This is also a dumb question, um, but.
No dumb questions.
For, I mean, when we put up the fencing, especially on the south side facing the highway, I mean, are we allowed to? You know. Use a particular, I don't know what you call it, like blinder or whatever on the fence itself to further visually shield, if that's a concern.
Um. That I don't know, to be honest, I I I don't really have an answer to that question because I don't know if. Um, conservation would chime in about the ability for wildlife to pass through. I know that's always.
I don't think that's.
There's a.
That's not a conservation.
It's like hide from the ground, uh, isn't it, that's the.
Yeah.
One of the concern for.
I. I'll admit.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Kyle.
I I was gonna, I was gonna say, I'll wait for you to be done, Mike, um, it's late, I'm I'm fuzzy, so.
Yeah, I know, I'm starting to get tired myself. Um. Yeah, I I I think if if you came back to us um, with a a a rethink on the buffer. For the Route twenty five side to 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 help shield that more from the passing cars. And um. I can check, I'm not quite sure who I'll ask, but I can always check to see, I'm assuming you're talking about. Like the vinyl ribbing that that weaves in and out of the holes in the chain link fence to as a shield? Or something.
Definitely not a fence expert, but I, yeah, I have to imagine something exists.
Yeah, there there there, there's the vinyl that sort of weaves in and out, and then there's also a, not canvas, but like a a. You can pick a green or a brown, you know, sort of inappropriate. Yes, thank you, that that um. You know, color to show as to blend as opposed to. Stand out and say, hey, I'm a fence.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Provide some details of those types of fence as well for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, do Kyle, you had more to say?
Yeah, I uh. I was gonna say, uh, please forgive me, I'm fuzzy and I'm also. Um, I've been working hard on the new bylaw, so I don't always remember what's in the new bylaw versus what's in the old bylaw. Um. So I believe that there was an option for for screening in the fencing uh, in the old bylaw or the existing bylaw. I had a a question and and perhaps this is uh, through you to Mr. Buckland. Um, if there is a buffer requirement in the existing uh, section five ninety. And the applicant uh, is working to. Um. With us to adjust that, is that uh, a waiver or is that within our right to? Um. To agree to, I can't remember if it was a hard and fast rule. I thought it said uh, minimum of, so would that be a waiver, Ken? Is Ken out there?
I'm 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 unmuted now, um. I believe the uh, I'm looking for the text right now. That you're allowed to um. Modify the screening as, modify the screening as as you see fit. To protect the uh, adjacent uh, visual impact.
Okay, great, I I know in the uh, in the new bylaw, we can modify it as we see fit, but only to make it more, not less. So I couldn't remember what it says now.
Can I chime in here, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
To that particular question, section five ninety four point three point seven. No portion of the buffer that is required can be used for fencing drainage facilities or other openings. Except as required to gain access to the property.
Right, so the.
Other words, you can't substitute fencing for the buffer.
Right.
And fencing, an enclosure that's required has to be outside the buffer.
Correct, and and I think that the spirit that they were offering was. If we're asking for, if they're offering twenty feet and we're asking for fifty feet. And we come back and and say, all right, uh, you know, the minimum is twenty feet. They can re redesign this so that maybe we're not getting the fifty, but we're getting thirty five. In addition to the screening on the fence that is obviously inside that buffer. Uh, I, that's how I'm interpreting what they're, what they were suggesting, not as, not as a substitute for.
I I would just en- encourage the board to be careful about how you do that because. Whatever adjustments you make to this could be uh, applied to just about any other project. And have been fairly consistent from day one with a minimum buffer of fifty feet, that's the way it's been interpreted regardless of the size of the project. So I would simply caution the board to be careful about how you do it and how you set it up, that's all.
I I put, I point you out uh, on section five ninety three, not five ninety four point one. Point uh, number three. On the front yard depth, shall be not less than fifty feet and maybe more is determined in the sole discretion of the permit granting authority.
Yep.
Depending on the visibility of the facility. Because of the density of vegetation. But you have, you have a discretion in in deciding it it has to be. But it has to be not less than fifty feet in the in the front yard, and that's on Route twenty five would be the front yard, I believe, that that's called out as the front. As as the access to this property, correct?
You know, I, if if I may, through to the chair, Mr. Buck, through the chair, Mr. Buckland, I I mean, I've been viewing the. Front yard as, you know, the access road comes in and then that's the front. Um, because we can't access the uh, parcel from Route twenty five. I mean, hold on a second, the access road. Um, that said, I just, um, I I promised at the beginning that I wouldn't go on, you know, about our reservation of rights of what we think are, you know, how the bylaw should be interpreted, but. Um, it's still, it's still almost positioned that. We're not across the street from a residential district or a residential development and we're not uh. A a budding, the lot does not a but, a residential district, but yes, of course, it's in residential district, but it doesn't a but.
And, but I I I think not, not to.
So just just to throw that back on the table.
Yeah, not not to beat the dead horse because it is starting to get late, but we all, I think we all, I think we all understand what we're trying to achieve. With the the screening from Route twenty five.
I think so.
Okay. Um. If there's no other board member that wants to comment, um. I will open it up for public hearing, but I I gotta, I just gotta caution whoever wants to speak to please keep it brief, it's it's getting very late and. We we still have. One more. Possible public hearing to to deal with, so. With that, is there anyone that would like to comment?
Yes, please, this is Barry Cosgrove.
Could I just ask if if the applicant has reviewed my letter of November third and if they have any comments about that letter?
Um, we have reviewed it and um, I think we're. Well, we don't have any comments at this time. We reserve our right to comment, but we don't have any comments today.
Right.
But thank, yes, thank you for your careful consideration of the project.
Uh, okay, um. So open a public comment, who 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 would like to speak to this project?
My name is Barry Cosgrove, I'd be grateful if I could.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please, like I said, if we could keep it brief, I would appreciate it.
Oh, and I I understand completely because I've been waiting the same four and a half hours you have. Um, could I ask that uh, to share my screen, please, if the current user could take their screen down? So I'd like to. Thank you again for your service to the town and make the point that. Protecting the people uh, that live here, I think really goes well beyond the boundaries that have been discussed tonight. Specifically, this project has been identified in connection with the town's unpermitted sand mining forensic investigation. In fact, this particular site, the sand mining has been so aggressive. That the town has already once had to stop them from actually sand mining the town's own property. The application submitted for this permit doesn't make any secret of that, sand removal. And notably, the permit makes no reference to an exemption from earth removal rule, so it would seem logical. That any permit application to develop land mined without permits. Should be suspended from consideration until the conclusion of this forensic inquiry. But point out too. That in your own application, the first sentence. It says any permits approval requests have to be preceded by documentation of payment of all taxes and fees. And fees would include amounts that could be owed as a result of this audit. And since the audit isn't completed, it's impossible to determine those fees. So again, it wouldn't seem logical. That this application could consider, it could continue at this point in time. And additionally, your own rules state. That applicants have to ascertain the availability of permits from the board of selectmen prior to applying with you guys. And that clearly has not occurred because they have not obtained, according to the board of selectmen. Earth removal, which was done as preparation for the site. Additionally. Fifteen ten seven makes it clear. That your job here. Is to make sure that the applicant is complying with all of the zoning bylaws, all of them. Section four forty is just one example and it has prohibited uses. And that's mining over the overlay district without a permit or without an exemption. Additionally, there's been no forestry cutting plan for the prior trees that have come down. And there's been none filed for the future trees coming down, not with Wayham Conservation as required. And not with the Department of Conservation Recreation. And then I'd repeat the point. I made the last time. That of course, this public hearing can't close and nothing can be decided until the Conservation Commission. Has made its findings, order of conditions, if any. Uh, and I skipped an important point and I beg your pardon. Section fourteen ninety of of your bylaw makes it clear you cannot do any site preparation. Until you've got your approval, now here's a little history that I hope will help. In two thousand and seven, the property owner acquired the property. You'll know that in two thousand and seven, nothing had been cut down, no trees, no mining. So it can't be said that the sand mining was before they bought the property. The certain money began in earnest to remember so aggressively that the town had to find them. Here the mining begins in two thousand and ten. So it clearly began afterwards and there's no relationship, there's no agricultural relationship between this property. And this owner in these blogs. You can see the mining, the hockey stick, uh, the golf club color, which you will, was very aggressive, and this is an important point. And we'll get to this in some detail, but quickly, have they mined question down into the groundwater? There are a lot of cumulative effects and questions that the bylaw compels be answered. Before this thing proceeds, what's the effect of this prior preparation on the hydrological regimen? Not just the surface water, but the hydrogeologic as well. How about groundwater mounting? And what about the safety and security of those slopes, we're talking about throwing some grass seed on there? But are those slopes safe? And has there been any fill going on there? If so, what is it, and at what depths? Are these uh, solar panels going to end up going into the ground, into the groundwater, high level mark? Is there fill there, what is it, what impact would that have? So there's a lot of stuff here that's unanswered that go well beyond these boundaries. And the buffering of people's view, tons of data needed to be explained here, you are authorized, this body is authorized. To require specific information and you're authorized to have engage in an engineering firm or. Uh, you have an excellent one already, uh, in Mr. Rowley, of course, but others if need be, as in the case of Fairing Hill. Where there is a hydrological study being conducted. We haven't even verified the area that's been surveyed and and delineated. Now, at the last meeting, I heard it said, the sand pit's a great site. Well, that's like saying, uh, you know, that used car looks good until you find out maybe the used car was, you know, involved in an incident. You have to do your due diligence, how did this site get to be quote unquote, a great site? If it got there by cheating, that isn't really fair. And it was mentioned about an Article fourteen exemption, I standard Article fourteen. I can't find any such exemption whatsoever. None whatsoever for the site preparation, earth removal that's been conducted here. It was mentioned last meeting, well, the landlords are actually irrelevant, the applicants are different entity, that's false. The landlord is in privy with this. Solar applicant. And the project doesn't exist without each other. And their contracts between each other say so, and then this question of no jurisdiction of a sand removal, I'm not asking. No one's asking you to incorrectly conclude that you're the board of selectmen that grants or denies an earth removal permit. But if you don't come away with anything from four and a half hours of waiting here, it's got to be this point. The planning board must comply with the bylaw, all the conditions of bylaw, and your mission statement makes that abundantly clear. Your mission statement says, in ensuring the public safety. Of citizens of Wayham, the proper application of all state local laws have to be complied with, this is your mission statement. And the definition that your mission statement says, for what do those laws include, they include all the bylaws. All the zoning bylaws and of course, the zoning act. So again, no one's asking you to step into a different area of jurisdiction, you've already got. You know, there's an old saying, he who seeks equity must do equity. In street talk, he. In street talk, he who wants a permit should play by the rules. Protecting the people that live here means we can't be indifferent. To bad, to bad acts. The people not playing by the rules. If we're gonna endorse people to go cut down trees. Create an unlawful sand pit without a permit, if that's the case, that's to be proven. And then we're gonna allow them right over an aquifer, no less. And then say, okay, look, you're gonna save the world by putting in some solar panels over it. I I just don't think that's the way to run the railroad. It's bad enough, it's very unfortunate, in fact, that solar is getting a bad name. It's getting a bad name because we're destroying the environment under the rules of saving it in a lot of cases. But putting solar in as a cover for prior unpermitted work is just plain inappropriate. I respectfully request the opportunity to be able to comment. And answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, is there anybody else in the? Audience that would like to comment? Okay. I would. Entertain. A motion to continue this to. See where we're at.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question to to the to to Mr. Cosgrove.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cosgrove, uh, thank you for your input. I have a question. You you mentioned that this illegal, your word, uh, sand mining has been going on for some years. Have you filed? An enforcement order? With either the zoning officer or? The 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 town, the the selectman?
Yes, the answer to your question, first of all, is that the zoning, uh, the 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 bylaw says that the enforcement body for earth removal is a board of selectmen. The answer is yes, and it was the most robust sophisticated complaint, maybe in the history of Wayham. Because it was in the form of a town meeting wildly endorsed referendum to get the town to do what it's supposed to do. To engage in investigation for uh, uh, unpermitted uh, sand mining. She answers, yes, but it was filed with the Board of Selectmen because they're the appropriate body and it was done through the resolution I mentioned.
And did did you get a response or a finding on that?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen, uh, four to one, uh, voted to, uh, agree with the town, uh, who voted to conduct this investigation. And the town manager reported to me that they have narrowed it down to two outside engineering firms to begin, uh, to choose between one of those two and then to begin here shortly.
Uh, and just, uh, continuing to help me understand because you've you've raised a significant concern. And I do remember, uh, voting, uh, for this last year. That was a broad sweeping, uh, complaint. Do you know? And there were many, many, uh, sites, I think, that were raised as a concern. Do you have an idea how long before we'll get a finding on this particular site?
I think that I I do not know the answer, and I think that the town administrator would probably be the best person to ask that question of.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, but so you have made a formal complaint and there is an open. That I I'm summarizing what what you what I've heard you say. Uh, you you believe the complaint was in the form of your article and the town is is pursuing that. So thank you.
Thank you.
So. I guess, Mr. Chairman, my question is back. To Mr. Buckland and then perhaps to Attorney Mason. How should we consider this investigation, uh, with respect to this application?
Uh, the, um, the criteria of the zoning bylaw does not include, uh. The investigation itself, so I think you have to, uh. Rely on Town Council to advise as to, uh. The relationship between your review of the permit and, um. The the points that Mr. Cosgrove raises.
Okay, uh, I I can I come back to you in a minute? Attorney Mason, you have any thoughts?
I. Can only say that as Mr. Buckland notes, this has nothing to do with the zoning bylaw. It's not within this board's jurisdiction. Um, also. This has nothing to do with our project, uh, in any way. Based on my understanding of the of the facts as Mr. Cosgrove relates them, these are things that happened years ago.
Yeah, Betsy, I can jump in. I mean, um, I just look back for my own sake and, you know. The first agreement with the landowner was signed for solar pursuit in twenty nineteen, um, so relatively recently. So, uh, all we do as developers typically at this stage is we, you know, you run title. And see if red flags have come back and I, uh, I guess I gotta go back and look at the title, make, and understand if this was in there. But I certainly would have, would think it would have come back as a big red flag on the on the property on the title run. And so again, I I don't know the details of the history of this parcel and and the potential disputes. But, um, all that sounds like very much well before our time and involvement. So that's all I can say.
Thank you for your input. So I guess, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Buckland again. Perhaps the board should ask Attorney Bowen. For his input on the relevance, uh, or how to how to interpret, uh, Mr. Cosgrove's concerns. Uh, and are we the right board? I I don't think we're the right body. To 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 deal with this.
Well, not with the, not with the, not with the alleged earth removal. But if if there is, uh, an ongoing concern about prior development, uh, before obtaining the permits. That that might fall under our purview.
Yeah, the development wasn't done by the applicant, the development was done.
Correct, but if the landowner. If the landowner still owns the land and is in his intent on leasing the land to the developer, then he's still involved.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I I don't. I I didn't perceive that the sand mining was in preparation of a solar project, it was sand mining.
And but yet to be determined whether it was permitted or not.
Or or illegal or illegal or or.
Exactly.
But if if I may to the chair and to. At this point. This seems speculative at best. I see the Google Earth. Pictures that Mr. Cosgrove has put up. The full presentation. But to the extent that there are any environmental concerns here, this this project is is currently under consideration by the Conservation Commission. Which has a number of the environmental concerns that Mr. Cosgrove has raised, all of them, in fact, setting aside any illegality of past acts of sand mining. Environmental impacts are being fully considered by the Conservation Commission. They've got a peer reviewer undertaking a review. Starting as of now. And, uh. Any, any concerns with environmental impacts, impacts to any aquifer or otherwise will be addressed in those proceedings. And I. I I would suggest that.
We're gonna.
The investigation that continue on a separate path, but it shouldn't shouldn't. Delay this project.
If I could, if I could comment through the chair.
Hey, if if everybody doesn't mind, you know, like two more minutes, and we're gonna wrap up the comment for tonight. It's not, it's not gonna get voted on tonight, so there'll be more more opportunity for comment.
Okay, I take the hint. Thank you very much.
So, um. We can, I can make arrangements to talk with Attorney Bowen. And and get, at least get some some guidance on it. On what we have, uh, responsibility for and what we don't as the planning board. And I'm sure that he can confirm or deny, uh, any ongoing investigation of perceived wrongdoing. So at this point, I would like to, uh. Move that we are entertain a motion that we move this. To the meeting of. May twenty third. As we've already got a full agenda on the ninth. And I'm not gonna put it on the twenty fifth where that's town meeting. That'll give us some time to get some questions answered. It'll be applicant time to to decide, uh, how they want to address the buffer along two Route twenty five. And the town bond, uh, property. And then we come back, uh, they can review Charlie's. Letter and comment on it if they so choose. And then we can reconvene on the twenty third and and pick this back up with a little bit more information at our disposal. So if I could get a motion to continue till the twenty third.
I'll move.
I mean.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason. By vote, Carl Schultz.
Just a point of order, doesn't the applicant have to agree to the date?
Yes, I'm raising my hand, thank you.
Okay, does the twenty third work for you?
I guess two, 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 uh, things to say. First, um, I would ask that the board consider closing the public hearing this evening. That would be, uh.
I I I'm not inclined to do that only because there was more information that, um, wanted to be given and due to the lateness of the hour. I asked the the public to to cease comment. So I'm not really inclined to do that.
And we really can't move forward on this until we get the report from Conservation Commission.
I think, just doesn't the bylaw say that you can't vote on it until you get the order conditions from the Conservation Commission?
I I think that's. That that maybe. There's a, there's a relationship, yes.
I was gonna say that there's a, there's a difference. If if. If we, I guess, if we can close the hearing tonight, the twenty third, twenty fourth would be fine. If not, we would really prefer, I I know that you said that May ninth is is quite full. Um, I did understand that you're also gonna be holding, uh, meeting on the second. Because, uh, the town meeting is on the twenty fifth and because there's so much going on. So I would request that, um, we we continue to May second as opposed to the twenty fourth. It's a good, it's a good, long way away.
No, it would, we we've been trying, we've been trying very hard to to put that project that's scheduled for May second to bed. And and that was the only reason that that special meeting was created was specifically for that project. I, I'm, I'm not inclined to to start clogging that date up with more projects. So, uh, I I would have to disagree with that request.
So I understand there's a, will there still be a concom? I guess there'll be plenty of those meetings that I expect Mr. Cosgrove to be weighing in at. I guess I'm just curious for the process. Could it, could we not close this hearing because there will be the concom discussion of the more environmental stuff? And then that still gives the board the chance, final chance to deliberate before any vote on this particular process at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, uh, through you to the applicant, if we close the public hearing tonight, then we don't have the opportunity to review any revised plans from you.
Ah, I did not appreciate that, okay.
We can still close the public hearing and vote on it the same night. If on the twenty third, if everything falls into place, I mean, it's not like it's gonna get pushed off one more meeting. We can accomplish both both parts on the same night.
Right, and given that you do need to have better conditions in hand before you can vote. I think, I think we can live with that.
Okay. Okay, so. With that said, uh, again, a motion to continue this public hearing for Project thirty three dash twenty one Site Plan Review. Wayham PD one LLC zero Route twenty five to the Planning Board Meeting of May twenty third, twenty twenty two. If I could get a motion for that.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste to evoke Carl Schultz.
Uh, sure, I'm a continuance, aye.
Thank you, uh, Sam Corbett.
Aye.
Mike Baptiste.
Aye.
Jane Gleason.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five zero zero to continue to May twenty three.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Is it realistic to to think that we're gonna be able to get through this in the next fourteen minutes? Give it a shot. Under public hearings, uh. For hearing impossible vote. Project seven dash twenty two Site Plan Review, two forty six Marion Road, two forty six Marion Road at LLV map fifty five lot, ten ten parking lot. Why is this one segregated? Is this a brand new public hearing, Kent? Why is it segregated from the other ones?
It's a brand new hearing.
Yeah, so we need to read, we need to read the notice.
That's right, you need to read the notice of hearing.
Aaron normally does that.
Yeah, I just say I don't have a copy of the notice.
I guess you have to wave the hearing or the reading of the notice then.
Okay, so we're we're gonna have to put this off. Is that what you're telling me?
No, just to wave the, to wave the reading of the notice.
Wave the reading of the notice, okay. Do we need to vote on that?
No, you don't.
Okay. Okay, so. Waving the reading of the notice for public hearing and possible vote. Project seven dash twenty two, is there someone from? Okay, it just says iPhone, can you identify yourself, please?
My name's Tanya, uh, me and my husband Derek Pires are neighbors to Cranberry Cottage.
We we typically don't take public comment until the applicant has has provided their information.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're gonna, I have a date for another.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, thank you. May I proceed?
No, we we need to vote to open the public hearing.
Having not read the notice, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Impossible vote for Project seven dash twenty two Site Plan Review, two forty six Marion Road.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded, uh, Ca- Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, uh, to evoke Carl.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five zero zero. Okay, sir, you may present.
Thank you, I'll keep it brief. My name is Brad Bertola from JC Engineering on behalf of the applicants. Uh, at two forty six Marion Road. If I may share my screen. All right, this property is located at two forty six Marion Road, it's the Cranberry Cottage, uh, at the corner of Brown Street and Marion Road Route six. As you can see in the shaded area, we have an existing. As you can see in the shaded area, we have an existing 75-seat restaurant with paved parking around and some gravel parking access areas on either side. The rest of the site here is wooded and this area here is currently lawn area, some encroachment for the neighbors onto this property. General topography of the property, slopes from a high point on the property, which is kind of around the building. Portion of it is overland runoff into the street captured by state highway catch facing. The remainder of the site kind of drains and falls down into this low area that's just kind of kind of bisecting the property line. This property has had some issues with parking on the property. There has been concerns with the parking along the front of the property. There was, as you can see on the plan, there's a number of parking spaces pre-existing. These painted lines here delineating the 13 parking spaces across the front. The issue is, as you can see, this bold line is the layout of the state highway. And the nose of each car overhangs or was overhanging into the street layout, impacting sightlines for any vehicles exiting Brown Street or exiting this current access point in this location here. They've attempted to alleviate the problems by placing parking bumpers kind of around the location of the street layout line, but they move, they get bumped by vehicles, the nose of the vehicle extends beyond that. So we're looking at correcting this situation here by expanding and relocating parking spaces on this property. What proposing is to provide a paved driveway, utilizing the existing curb cut that's there today, and formalize the parking that's on this project, this property. The area here is all previously existing gravel. No formal parking spaces, kind of a free-for-all, kind of unsafe for pedestrians as they're walking across the parking lot. We are proposing an access point off the rear of the building onto Brown Street. This will allow for parking spaces that were currently situated in the front to be relocated to the side and rear of the property. Currently, there's 13 parking spaces here. We are looking to minimize that down to four parallel parking spaces to try to keep any vehicles from sticking out and impacting any sightlines. We are also providing a dumpster enclosure that's on the property with a fence in this area here. Currently, I believe there might be some type of freestanding dumpster that's kind of behind the structure right now on this gravel area. To account for the runoff that's being generated by the increase in impervious area, we are proposing drainage system that'll capture and infiltrate up to the 100-year storm event due to shallow groundwater in this location of town. We have a very shallow detention basin overland runoff. As you can see, it'll continue the same drainage patterns, kind of pitched towards the south of the property. Water will sheet flow on the driveway and go into this grassed swell or basin. Basically a four-bay in this location, which will overflow into the rest of the basin. Similar situation on this side, creating a high point on this location right here where you can get all water to runoff, run down this gutter line and go through a stone riprap area, again, into a sediment four-bay overflow into the same unit, same basin. We do have an overflow dirt for the 100-year storm where outward control structure will infiltrate, or capture and infiltrate the larger rainstorm. And that'll help help infiltrate stormwater in this area because it's sandier soils. Again, this does involve drainage review. I'm fully anticipating the town consultant doing a review on this project and I'm not anticipating any type of vote this evening. One other point I forgot to mention was that we are we did look at accessway for Fire Department, Wareham's fire truck. So we do have room to go through all sides of this property. Currently, they have really access just across the front and maybe when there's no cars there and then maybe parking on the side of the road at this point. So we are opening it up to full access for emergency vehicles to enter this property. With that being said, and due to the lateness of this meeting, I'd like to turn it over to the board at this time and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Charlie, next step obviously would be for them to set up a 53G to pay for your services for review.
Yeah, I haven't even been given the plans to give you an estimate yet, though, Mike. I'd have to get those from others.
Okay, so I think, again, because of the lateness of the hour, you know, the next step obviously would be to get the plans to Charlie, have him supply us with an estimate so that we can establish the 53G account and get started on the review. In fairness to the to the neighbor that identified themselves in the beginning, I'm gonna chew up a couple of the last three minutes and allow them to speak if that's okay with the board. No objections?
No, we're great with the later date. I understand it's late.
Okay, well, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we had a later date because we did show up to the municipal maintenance building earlier. I am sorry. The actual multi-service, thank you. Yes, we showed up, so we just wanted to make sure we were heard, that's all.
Yep, we're not going to close the public hearing tonight, so you'll get an opportunity to speak with us at the next meeting.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody on the board that would like to comment to this? All of the night?
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so, well, do we need to to allow Charlie to create the estimate in the 53G account?
I would suggest the May 23rd date for your next meeting.
Okay, and we can, all right, we'll vote on that then. Okay, very good then. That being said, we will, I would entertain a vote to continue this hearing until the May 23rd, 2022 agenda.
I'll move.
I'll move. Second.
Don't fight over it, guys. Don't fight over it.
Mike, did you need to continue the one for Dodie Street?
I think we did that.
Okay.
Yeah, we already did that, yep.
Okay, I just didn't mark it down. Okay.
Okay. All right, so a motion by, I think Sam won the race and seconded by Carl to move this, continue this to the May 23rd agenda. So with a vote, Carl?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, 500 to continue. Now the free-for-all, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait, the chairman, there's another item on the agenda.
No, tonight there isn't.
Yes, there is.
As I was gonna say, what exactly is that?
That's, hang on. I'm looking at, hang on. Discussion of draft recommendation to the town meeting. Item five. I'm okay. I read it. I'm okay, Mike, if you want to talk to Ken about what you want to say at the town meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah, I read through this too. Yeah, I'm probably gonna end up spending a little bit of time at Town Hall tomorrow or Wednesday, so I can I can bang that out if everybody is okay with that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, I'm satisfied we covered this item.
I just have one quick comment. I do think it would be good in the report to beef up the discussion of the solar bylaws to make sure that there is some reasoning in there that picks up on the Attorney General's letter in order to, you know, increase the likelihood of getting those over the goal line.
Okay, very well. Maybe if you're available one day this week, maybe you can come in and sit with Ken and I so that we can formulate a presentation that'll work.
Sounds good.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste to evoke Carl.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Yep.
And chair votes aye, 500. Good night, everybody, and thank you so much.
Thank you for running the meeting.